Okay. Good evening, folks. It is 7:02 on Monday, November 9th, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll and remind council members to state the location from which you are participating remotely.
Councilmember Betts.
This is Brandon Betts, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
The Dunbar, participating remotely from Fort Austin, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
Councilman Garza, Jeremy Garza, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
This is Adam Hussein, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
Brian Jackson, participating remotely from E, Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Councilmember Peter Spatafor, present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Spitzley, participating remotely from Pensacola, Florida.
And Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Wood, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, there are eight members present at forum. And with that, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there, is there anyone that the council wishes for us to keep in our thoughts this evening as we embark on a moment of meditation? Councilmember Jackson, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wood, and Hussein.
Thank you, President Spatafor. If we could remember Mark Brown's family in our prayers. Mark passed away. He was an intricate member of our community. He served on the mayor's diversity committee. He also served, was a longtime member of the ADHAC Committee on Diversity and Inclusion. So if we could remember Mark's family at this time, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. I'd like folks to remember Mike Smith, who passed three days ago. He, you know, as well as his family, obviously, his friends, and the countless, you know, number of individuals he impacted through his work as an educator, as a football coach, as an athletic director. He did some work in Holt, even Rapids. I believe he was in Danville for a short period of time. And then, you know, most recently, he was a football coach in Everett, or for Everett, as well as their athletic director. I was fortunate enough to spend some time, actually, an entire year with Mike when he was out in Holt. And I was a student in the Michigan State Education, College of Education, and I was doing some field work. And one of the things that impressed, I think that most impressed upon me regarding Mike was his heart for our young people, his heart for the work. And I guess I went into expecting as a physical education instructor, as a football coach, that his relationships would be incredibly strong with, you know, the males in the school and the football players. And it was, you know, in between class or after school or at lunch, it was, you know, it was always, I don't know, I always marvel at the fact that students from all walks of life stopped by to talk to Mike. And it was clear that, you know, he had a heart for all of the young people. And so I would really like folks to remember Mike and his family, but also Mr. Okti Rose. Okti Rose passed, I believe it was November 1st, you know, and I'd like us to remember him, his family, and the countless individuals that he impacted as well. I met Ok as a young person in southwest Lansing, living in multifamily housing. Ok and his wife Joan, who was surviving, were property managers. And, you know, impressed upon me from a very early age was how much they cared about the work that they did and the people that lived in the properties that they managed. You know, they truly would give their shirt off the back, you know, off their backs. And further, you know, they really cared about giving folks that, you know, were indigent in southwest Lansing, you know, safe places to call home, homes that they could, you know, be proud of and feel safe in. And so again, I'd like you to keep Ok, his wife Joan, and obviously their families in your thoughts and prayers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Mayor.
I would like to add to the list Kim Coleman, our HRCS director. Her daughter Sheena was killed in a car crash a few days ago. And I hope we will remember Kim and Melvin and their entire family and keep them all in our thoughts.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands this evening, if we could remember the Brown, Smith, Rhodes, and Coleman families in our moment of meditation. Please join me in a moment. Thank you. Would you all join me in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmembers, just any comments from councilmembers? Okay, Mr. Vice President Hussein.
Sorry, just very, very quickly. I won't, you know, talk too much about the Swag spaghetti dinner that took place, or I should say, the purpose of the Swag, the Southwest Action Group spaghetti dinner that took place this past Thursday, because I talked a lot about it, obviously, in the lead up to the event. But I do want to talk about how fantastic the turnout was. It was absolutely incredible. I don't believe that any, any of us believed that the turnout and that the support of that event would be as large as it was, as grand as it was. Swag, looking at a little bit of data here, Swag sold 199 spaghetti dinner tickets, $10 apiece. And that's pretty incredible, considering all of the marketing and outreach was done, really amid a global pandemic. In addition, Swag was able to take in $4,065 in donations and sponsorships. So in total, this group was able to raise nearly $6,000, due really to the generosity of Lansing's people. And I think really the excitement that people have regarding this work that Southwest Action Group is doing to, you know, to really support some of our most underserved areas throughout south Lansing. I know that they want me to thank very quickly a few of the donors and sponsors. So we want to thank publicly Legacy LLC, the Gillespie Group, the South Lansing Business Association, South Lansing Quanis, Friends of Southwest Lansing. And then there are a number of individuals from Representative Anthony to Councilwomen Wood and Spitzley, Commissioners Truback, Slaughter and Morgan, Mayor Shore, Vicki Miller, Hope Lovell, and there are just a host of others that, you know, obviously supported through the purchasing of tickets. And then we'd also like to thank, we actually had dozens of volunteers come out to support in, you know, really in the planning for this event, the advertising, outreach just in general, and then obviously set up and tear down the day of. And then lastly, we want to thank the land bank. They were huge. We actually were able to host this at the old school site at Pleasant Grove and Homes. That is right now a land bank property. And they were huge in helping us, you know, provide for a space that would allow us to have a kind of a COVID-conscious event. So again, thanks to everybody that was involved. I think this was a true demonstration of just how strong and really committed and united our community is. And I couldn't be prouder to be part of this community. So thank you.
Councilmember Jackson. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for their communications to council, myself, beginning a lot of just opinions, whether it's phone calls or emails, pro, con, for, against, different things. And during the pandemic, without having our usual constituent meetings and the opportunity really to safely mix with people, those communications are appreciated. So keep them coming.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I know City Clerk Swope was probably going to mention this, but I do want to thank him and his team for our very successful election here in the city of Lansing. I know you did your best to make sure that we had as many opportunities for our residents to submit a ballot as possible. And I really appreciate those efforts on behalf of our community to make sure that our election was fair, open, and safe. So thank you very much, Mr. Swope. Seeing no further comments from councilmembers, I'll turn it over to Mr. Swope.
All right. Thank you, President Spatafor. Yes, I really just want to thank the community for turning out and voting during the, during this pandemic. We had a great turnout, 60% turnout. Over two-thirds of the people who voted voted by absentee ballot, either from home or by coming to my office and voting early. So great participation in that. And we still had a lot of people vote at the polls on Election Day. So it was very busy all around. I particularly want to thank the election workers who spent so many hours working on, on the election, my staff who just really put in much time and dedication and efforts. And there were people who volunteered. Some of our election workers came in and helped us stuffing envelopes and various other things leading up to the election. It was just truly a team effort, a tremendous effort. I'm still feeling a little bit tired, but I think we're all recovering. And I'm just proud of the whole community. Yes, we did have a fair, safe, honest election. I believe that's the case throughout Michigan. You know, there have been some things said about some other communities. I believe that Michigan had a fair, safe, honest election. And our results are the results of what the voters wanted them to be. So thank you. And thank you, council, for, for your role in, in making sure that I had the resources and for passing the resolutions that helped us accept the grants that helped us get through this. And thanks also to the Center for Tech and Civic Life for their generosity in helping us get what we needed to get this election done. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, you have up to one minute to tell us the time, place, and purpose or definition of the event. So please raise your hand now, and you can be recognized to tell us about any community events. I am not, oh, I see. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of mouse trouble here.
While we're waiting there, Councilmember Garza, did you wish to make comments?
Just got a question for you. I have somebody that's calling, one of my constituents that's trying to call in tonight, and he said that he's asked, being asked for a participant ID. Is that something?
If he's being asked for a participant ID, he shouldn't, he or she shouldn't just, I think, just push pound.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for community event announcements, I see Sherri Baller and then SD Langford. And if you don't mean to be on community event announcements, please lower your hand. I see Sherri lowered her hand. Don't know if she, maybe she didn't. So on community event announcements, SD Langford. Nope, he lowered his hands too, or she. Rosetta Houston, are you on community events? Apparently not. Propagandy, are you looking to speak on community events?
I am, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
So as some of you may have seen up to this point, L4BL, Lansing for Black Lives, has been running a campaign with images of the misconduct and craziness that's been going on in the city as well as the nation. And we got a citywide call for action, which will be on November 19th, time to be, time to be announced. But we're going to be taking action, and we're no longer going to be sitting on our heels. So November 19th, be on the lookout for that, L4BL. That's it. I appreciate you.
All right, thank you. That appears to be our last community event announcement. So we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. And I have a feeling that's what many of those folks wanted to raise their hands for. So if you wanted to speak about legislative matters, which does include the scheduled public hearings, and I know that there are probably a number of people who want to speak about the special assessments for Montgomery Drainage. There are a total of six public hearings. Also, during this time would be when you would raise your hand to speak about any item listed on the consent agenda or resolutions for action or the ordinance for introduction. So please go ahead and start raising your hand. And once we get back to calling on folks, after we call on the first person, we will end accepting more hands raised. So that will limit, so please do go ahead and get your hand raised if you do want to speak. And while folks are getting their hands raised, we will go ahead to the, oh, and I'm sorry. I also, we also have a show cause hearing tonight. So that would also be, go ahead and raise your hand if you are here for the show cause hearing. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. A few things. One, our neighborhood cleanups applications are now open for 2021. So if there are neighborhoods that want to apply for cleanups, they can contact our Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement Department. Our final Walking Wednesday show airs this Wednesday on the 11th. As many people know, we do Walking Wednesdays every week in the summer, and this year they were done in very small groups with TV cameras following. So several of our neighborhoods did them, and the final one airs on City TV this Wednesday. I want to congratulate all of these Citizen Academy graduates. I think the last class is this week. So they, they made it through in one of the weirder years, but, but they will graduate. I want to remind everybody that this Wednesday is Veterans Day. So let's all remember our veterans. The city, every year, does a Veterans Day event. Usually, it's, it's at Eastern High School, but this year, we're doing it virtually. So the city's virtual Veterans Day can be seen on City TV and on the city's Facebook page at 6:00 PM. Should be a good program. Our Veterans Commission has done a really good job putting that together. So hopefully, people will tune in at 6:00 PM and honor our veterans here in Lansing. And finally, I want, we announced, but I'll mention it tonight, that City Hall and our facilities will remain closed to the public until January 11th. We still are doing things by appointment and, but the buildings will remain closed to the public until January 11th. The COVID numbers are not going in a positive direction. So we're going to make sure to keep the public safe, keep our employees safe, do what we can to, to make sure that, that we are not spreading and that, that this awful pandemic does not spread. So we will be closed through January 11th. So I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilmember Spitzley, I would like just to let council know, we need to get a 26th meeting in. I think you're all aware of that because of the one that had to be canceled. So I'm going to work with Sherri to get something on your schedule to just approve our meeting schedule for next year, something very pro forma that we would typically do during a Cal meeting, but just get it done in a special meeting so that we can check the box of having our 26 and without too much controversy there. So just be on the lookout when Sherri sends an email for scheduling to make sure that you get on there, because we do need to have that meeting. But I promised I'd give the city clerk plenty of time so we didn't have to rush around the city with those letters. So we'll, we'll get it put on the schedule, probably after Thanksgiving, since we're running out of daylight between now and then. But appreciate you guys humoring me on that one. It is a charter requirement that we have those 26 meetings. So we will do that. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. I wanted to follow up and ask a question in regards to just COVID in general. And you're saying that we're going to keep the, the offices closed until after the new year. And I was just wondering if we could kind of just get a general overview of, you know, how we're doing with staff and COVID and testing and what's the, what's the policy or procedure if someone comes down with COVID on the job? Can you, can you give, and, you know, I know that some of our police officers, there are a few police officers that had COVID. And what's the process for that? Are they regularly tested? Just kind of a general overview of our COVID policy as it relates to our employees?
Yep, I can send you the, yeah, I can, I can send you that policy. Nick Tate has worked that through. We use the recommendations from Myosha, from the CDC. So we can send council that policy. Actually, it's on the hub. So you can check that out on the hub. When we updated it, it went out to everybody. So you should have gotten it. We've got a few cases. It seems that the cases that we're getting are, we had a few in the police department. We had a few in the fire department. We had a few exposures that were not positives, but are quarantined until they get tested and they come back negative. We had a few employees that, that got it and more likely because of travel. And, and they got it just for traveling. And if they're symptomatic, if they, if they have any symptoms at all, they, they get tested, they're sent home. We don't do testing. There's testing at Sears Location for Sparrow. There's testing at McLaren. There's testing at the county health systems. There's testing at the stadium, at the, the Spartan, at Spartan Stadium on the southeast concourse, I believe, from eight to five. So we have very strict policies. Again, I can get you the copies. They should, you can probably go right to the hub on your, on your intranet and get them there. But if you want, we can have Nick Tate send them out.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it is possible, I'm sorry I didn't talk about before, but is it possible that Mr. Tate maybe do a quick summary of those in our next committee, the whole, when we, when we discuss the potential, the state of emergency?
I can certainly mention it to him and ask him to, to present. He's a, his wife's a medical professional, and he's got a young son. So his schedule depends on, on his wife's job as a, as a medical professional. But I will ask him if he can provide some kind of an update or provide you with some information in the policies and things like that. It's all spelled out. Everything is on the hub, and every employee gets that. And then every director talks to, talks through with their employees. So they've all got the procedures. And they're continually updated as the CDC recommends new, as we hear things from the state. Whenever we get from, when the executive order changed from the EO to the DHHS orders, when the county health department comes out with orders, we update it fairly regularly as, as recommendations are updated. So Nick's on top of that. He leads a lot of that. He works with William Engletor, who's our emergency management director. William works with Linda Vale. So we talk to Linda Vale fairly often. We talk to MSU once a week. So these all make their way to our employees through our policies that are on the hub, that are emailed out, that are provided through directors, and we'll get that for you. And I can see if Nick's available on the 30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, I would appreciate a presentation. So if Nick's not available, maybe his deputy or whoever he's working with could come. But I think council would appreciate an update on, you know, what we're doing for COVID efforts. But thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have show cause hearing in consideration of the issuance of orders for make safer demolish to the owners of property at 2108 East Kavanaugh.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you. So what we have before us is in consideration, the issuance orders to make safer demolish property located at 2108 East Kavanaugh. So Lansing Coal Compliance Office has declared a certain structure at 2108 East Kavanaugh to be unsafe and dangerous, an unsafe and dangerous building, and requested the property owner be ordered to demolish or otherwise make safe the structure. The coal compliance officer red tagged that said structure on 3/29/2017 and requested the property owner to be ordered to demolish or otherwise make safe the structure. So from my understanding, they have not been in contact, no permits were pulled. And so on 12/5/19, the Lansing Demolition Board held a special meeting to consider and make a recommendation on whether the structure is dangerous. Keep getting feedback. Declare the structure dangerous building and order the property owner to make safer demolish the structure on 3/27/2020. So the coal compliance office has determined that the compliance with the order of Lansing Demolition Hearing Board Officer has not concurred. So with that, I would like to move the show cause hearing.
Okay, and I, I think this is the first show cause hearing we have had since we've been doing Zoom meetings. So we don't really have a provision or a way for that person to
So Mr. Clerk, what I would recommend we do is not act on it until we're done with public comment.
Yes, I would concur. And I, I would mention that I don't see the name that appears on the property records in our list of speakers. So I'm guessing that the person may not be here, but
Councilmember Garza, could I ask you to withdraw your motion, and we'll take, we'll dispose of it?
It's out of mode, yes.
Okay, just one more thing I forgot to left out. I left out the state equalized value of the building structure is at $12,600. And to repair the building or make the structure safe would be $52,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are to public comment on legislative matters. And let me read into the record. As I indicated, the consent agenda resolutions for action and ordinances for introduction are all eligible for discussion, as well as the following public hearings. And I'll briefly read into the record. Number one, lease agreement for Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. Number two, downtown riverfront project for the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club. Number three, special assessment for Montgomery Drainage District improvements. Number four, commercial rehabilitation district at 329 to 337 South Washington Square. Number five, commercial rehabilitation certificate for 329 to 337 South Washington Square. And number six, an ordinance to amend Chapter 602 to prevent disease, prolong life, and promote public health. And that's related to the COVID crisis. And then, Mr. President, I don't know if you want to have councilmembers?
We'll start with item one, Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, so actually, items one and two deal with the same project. They deal with the same developers. So I'll just talk about them in general. We had, you know, this, this pertains to Detroit Rising. So it's an out of town developer. They want to lease the former city market site in order to allow for food court. I think they're talking six to seven restaurants, a bar, event space. As part of the project, Detroit Rising will also make improvements to the patio. There is a potential, or the potential for a kind of an outdoor restaurant of sorts. And then they're also looking at constructing a second floor kind of mezzanine within the current city, or I should say, the former city market space, which would allow for some public space or use of that space, as well as some shuffleboard courts. In terms of the lease, which is one of the subjects of tonight's public hearings, this has been filed for more than 30 days, which is required per our charter, required per our ordinances. The, the terms of the lease agreement are as follows. I believe it is a, yes, it's a 40-year lease. Rent would start at $24,000 a year. The annual rent would increase by the annual rate of inflation or 2.5%, whichever is higher. There would be a recalculation of sorts at year 10 that would include some revenue sharing. And all that is kind of laid out as part of a formula in the agreement. And then for every year thereafter, the annual rent would once again increase by the rate of inflation or 2.5%, whichever is higher. There are some use requirements and conditions and things of that nature that are laid out in the lease agreement. I'll read just a few of those. The building must be used as a food hall and event space. Marijuana or cannabis related uses by the lessor tenants would be prohibited. The lessor would have to host free weekly community programming. The lessor would make event space available for use by community groups and allow reduced rates for city of Lansing-based groups or individuals and things of that nature. There's a few others. Prevailing wages required. That's in terms of the construction, that would be part of this project. The total investment for this development or this project would be about $2,900,000. And as part of kind of their capital stack, they are requesting from the LEDC a business assistance finance loan. And so in order for any applicant, we've seen this before, in order for any applicants to qualify for these loans, the LEDC has to actually work with the applicant. They have to put together what's called a project plan, as well as a development plan that includes, you know, the, the project area improvements, locations of improvements to be made, cost, timelines, things of that nature. The amount in terms of this loan would not exceed $65,000, but it would be moved, or would be used, sorry, to purchase a liquor license. That liquor license would in turn be used as collateral for, for the loan. The LEDC Board of Directors did approve the project plan, however, they can't move forward. And in terms of the LEDC, they can't move forward with their process because per state statute, we have to go through our process, which includes a public hearing and a subsequent vote on this issue. So that is items one and two. When we look at items three, obviously, we've talked a lot about the Montgomery Drainage District improvements. We talked a lot about the fact that the Ingle County Drain Commissioner, as well as the Drain, Ingle County Drain Board, sorry, they plan to proceed with this project. We have reached out. We have asked them to consider, I'm halting the project. they plan to proceed with this project. We have reached out. We have asked them to consider, I'm halting the project, especially considering the fact that we are amid kind of a global pandemic, but it is, as our understanding, it is full steam ahead. And there's not a lot we can do. They have pretty broad power and authority. That being said, we know that ultimately sixty four percent of the costs of this project, that's about twenty three million seven hundred thousand dollars, will be the responsibility of the City of Lansing. We have taken a look at a number of ways to pay that bill that will come due. As part of the budget process, we talked a lot about this. We did decide that we would move forward with a fifty fifty split. And what that means is fifty percent, which is about eleven million eight hundred thousand, would be paid by a point two six mil drain code that would be levied on all property owners in the City of Lansing. That's residential, that's commercial and other. And then fifty percent of the cost would be paid by a special assessment levied on benefited properties within the drainage district, and that is the subject of tonight's public hearing. My understanding, the average assessment over thirty years for residential property owner would be six thousand six hundred and eighty one dollars. And I believe the average for a commercial property owner would be two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. If we break that down a little bit further, on the commercial side of things, the assessment ranges from as low as fifty thousand all the way up to two point seven million dollars on the commercial side of things. Those assessed can pay that in full, or they can elect to pay that over thirty years in installments, annual installments. And and then we talked a little bit to some folks were wondering, you know, how these numbers essentially were, you know, were settled on. Essentially, we were looking at runoff contribution when we looked at individual property assessments. So the Public Service Department, as well as the city assessors, they looked at things like size of land, land use, amount of green space versus pervious surface, things of that nature. And we've been told that that is industry industry standard, and that's also the methodology that the Drain Commissioner used in determining the division of costs, you know, across municipalities. The last thing I'd say very quickly, and we certainly appreciate President Spadeford, we appreciate Councilman Betts, as well as Andy Andy Kilpatrick. They did meet. I believe it was actually before the October twelfth meeting that we were supposed to have that was canceled because we didn't want to run afoul of the State's Open Meetings Act. But in any event, they did meet with the residents out of Frandore Hills to discuss this and to field questions so that we could have a really informed conversation tonight. So we certainly appreciate those those fellows for going out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Next item on the agenda is the Commercial Rehabilitation District and Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate public hearings. We'll hear from Councilmember Spitzey on those.
Thank you, Mr. President. So these are also jointly together, but we first have to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District, and then we issue the Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate. And so this is for establishing a Commercial Rehabilitation District for properties located at three twenty nine to three thirty seven South Washington Square, downtown Lansing. Specifically, the Studio one oh nine shop to the corner of Strange Matters. The project proposes to renovate or replace buildings and major systems work, including, but not limited to HVAC replacement, roof replacement, exterior wall repair, and some plumbing for a total of two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. The current time schedule anticipates the permit applications in, well, it was, this says October twenty twenty, but that's probably, I don't know if that's actually happened, but construction to begin shortly after, and it's going to take approximately ten months to complete. They're asking for a certificate and financing for ten years. See, the project is intended to present to, again, update the commercial buildings that are falling into disrepair. And there are also some apartment buildings up top, and there's some, also some renovations anticipated to be done to those apartments, including some paint remodel of apartment fixtures, the common, the common area and the establishment of a conference room. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzey. And then final, the final public hearing, Councilmember Vice President Hussein, ordinance to amend chapter six oh two.
Sure. So this would allow for the City of Lansing to help enforce local health orders issued by Ingle and Eaton County Health Departments, but would also allow for the enforcement of state orders issued by the Department of Health and Human Services. Essentially, the LPD would be empowered to issue civil infractions. I think that is, that would be in an amount up to five hundred dollars in addition to issuing misdemeanors. The spirit of this is to ensure compliance without issuing misdemeanors whenever possible. As a matter of fact, when you look at the language in the ordinance, you know, it really talks about educating and things of that. That language is actually baked in there. And so, you know, we're hoping that happens, obviously, before the issuing of any civil infraction. The, let's see, second piece of this really centers, I think, on due process. You know, and and kind of checks and balances. We had Linda Vale into our last committee of the whole, who is the Ingle County's Health Director. And she was very honest with us. You know, she talked about the power that health departments really have in the eighty three counties across the state of Michigan. And, you know, the fact that, you know, they kind of issue health orders, they decide whether health orders have been violated, they feel, you know, kind of appeals, and they make, you know, subsequent decisions. So this ordinance, as I understand it, would really empower the fifty four district court to adjudicate these issues. Due, there were some concerns, I believe it was from council members, Jackson and Dunbar and Betts, that, you know, this this could be applied unfairly, essentially. So the city attorney has committed to reporting to council on a kind of a semi regular base on the number of misdemeanors, civil infractions, things of that nature that would be issued under this code or that have been issued under this code. And then they're going to break that down by demographics. We did pass an emergency ordinance that mirrors this language, but, you know, per state statute, emergency ordinances are only able to be in effect for sixty days. So that is the reason why we are looking at a permanent change to our code.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we are now to the actual public comment on those items that you've heard about. We first have S D Langford followed by Chris Umlt. Sure.
Ho- hold on just a second, Mr. Clerk. I think there's an issue. Okay, so S D Langford, you are in and you can speak if you wish. City TV is helping us with the logistics, and I think there was confusion as to how that might work, so. Just a second. S D Langford, you are able to speak if you want. Let's move on.
Okay, Chris Umlt followed by Emily Syria. I apologize, Emily, for my pronunciation. Chris Umlt.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Commenting on the Montgomery Drain, I have already filed my appeal, so this isn't file my appeal. Just to make a comment, I want to thank the city and the council for coming out to our neighborhood in October. That was helpful for a lot of people. I think it was discouraging for many to hear how little apparently can be done at this point. For us, it was a little, too little, too late. I think in hindsight, perhaps, you know, we we were notified of things, but we didn't understand the ramifications of the drain work that was happening at Frandore. Seemed like a different world, something that affected the businesses over there. And and we do feel like, or at least I feel like council and the city has helped us to understand this recently, but not previously. I appreciate the efforts of the current council to do so, and I hope that you will charitably consider the many appeals that you're probably going to receive.
Okay, thank you. Next is Emily Syria followed by Kathleen Edgerly.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Emily Serja. I'm a resident of Lansing in the first ward. I just want to express my support tonight for the resolution to invest in the people of Lansing. I know that will be discussed tonight. And I just want to express as well that although I'm frustrated by the the way that I have seen this resolution become watered down committee, I still think it's a really important next step for this council to listen to the the number of voices like my own, but there are many who have been expressing support for defunding the police and reinvesting that in the community. So I just want to express my support for, again, for the resolution to invest in the people of Lansing, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Edgerly followed by John.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Kathleen Edgerly, I serve as Executive Director of Downtown Lansing, Inc. Just wanted to share that GLI supports a strategic development of downtown that adds to the sense of place and sustainability of our downtown district. Over the next twelve to eighteen months, our board and our staff are focusing and centering our programming around providing small business support, and that's why I'm here tonight to speak on support of the Lansing Riverfront Project in terms of the Lansing Social Club as well as the Commercial Rehabilitation District. For the Commercial Rehabilitation District in the three hundred block of South Washington Square, I am in support of this district and the project as it preserves the historic buildings in our downtown and adds to the character you can find, while also making the necessary upgrades to make it a sustainable and flexible building for both today, as well as any changes that may take place long into the future. This project needs more than just a patch job. By establishing the commercial district, it would allow the necessary repairs to be made to preserve the integrity of the building so that it can serve the needs of both those commercial tenants as well as residential tenants. And during these COVID times, the needs of our residents that are here twenty four seven have definitely been highlighted. As far as Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club, this project is actually set up to perfectly serve as a flexible space that lifts up our budding entrepreneurs, artists, and established businesses while connecting it to community spaces. Not only would it add positive energy to our riverfront, but I believe it also provides and allows for a stepping stone for business owners or vendors. Sorry. My, no, excuse me. Looking for those vendors who want to make the next step from a market setting or a food truck to actually move into someday bricks and mortar spaces, but in that in between time, when they could be in this space, they will learn how to flush out their business plan, build a loyal clientele, things of that nature. And the fact that it's ever revolving and rotating really fits in with what our current business owners are asking for is more attraction based businesses that'll bring not only the greater Lansing area residents to the downtown, but others from further out as well. And lastly, during these COVID times, it's wonderful and almost unheard of to have two proposed projects like this being planned. It sends a message to our developers, investors, property owners, and businesses that we believe in downtown and we believe in our city, that we as a city can come together and drive the types of investments and opportunities that we want. So I encourage us all to embrace vision, smart and creative investment that includes multi use spaces like those proposed, celebrates culture, and leads to business success. Thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Chris, you've been, you're muted. I don't know if you were saying things.
Sorry about that. Next is John. Following John, we will go back to S D Langford. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, council, mayor, clerk. The reimagining, redistributing budgets and defunding the LPD is simply not going to do it for the cities, citizens of Lansing. We need to be protected, and we are grateful for the Lansing Police Department for all their efforts. They have a hard and unenviable job. So let's not take away the resources that they need to do this difficult, sometimes very dangerous job. And if, I've been listening in on the, participating in the diversity initiative, and it's still very obvious that the main issues of Lansing citizens are not going to be addressed by whatever comes out of this. The one thing that we need is more and better jobs. And what has been coming out of all the meetings so far does not address this. We can do well for ourselves if we could just get decent work. And I believe that everyone's heart is in the right place, but right now, it seems that the that it's going in the wrong direction. We could make our our own lives better if we're just given a chance. And if city council would work with businesses to ensure more hiring, better paying jobs, we could take care of a lot of problems of poverty that affects this community, you know, community of color, and even the white folks that are here. We could do it for ourselves. We don't need everything. We just need an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have S D Langford followed by Julia Kramer.
So it looks like S D lowered their hand.
Okay, lost him again. Julia Kramer and then Megan Martin.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to speak in support of the resolution to invest in the people of Lansing and in defunding the police. Is, this is clearly a subjective issue, but it is obvious to me that this is the correct course of action. So that's what I would like to speak in support of. I also am concerned about the enforcement of local health orders, concerned about inequitable enforcement of those orders. And I'm I'm not quite satisfied with the idea of just collecting data on enforcement based on demographics. Just collecting data and reporting on it does not create a situation of equity. That just shows when inequitable things are happening. So I would love to see more action from the city around creating a more equitable way to enforce health orders. It is important. But one of the actions that we can take is giving the police less money and less influence and less power over human beings. So that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do want to remind folks that we are past the point where we are accepting additional raised hands. Our next speaker is Megan Martin followed by Christopher Sell.
Hi, Megan Martin here. I'm the Executive Director of the Arts Council of Greater Lansing. I'm calling to kind of echo what Kathleen Edgerly from Downtown Lansing, Inc. said in regards to the Lansing Shuffleboard and Social Club and the Downtown Lansing Riverfront Project, and just how great that that project is going to be for the City of Lansing. I am really excited to see how how this has been developed, so in a way that involves the community and in a way of giving them free programming and activating a space that has been so beautifully built up and also utilizes a space that's so prominent in our downtown area along the riverfront. And so I'm just wanting to make a statement and. And so I'm just wanting to make a statement on behalf of that. And I'm excited to see how specifically this group would be able to maximize that space and really make it something exciting for the people that are already enjoying Rotary Park. And they're looking for programming and they're looking for ways to activate that space. And I really believe that this group in particular is going to activate it in a way that is rotating and is going to really bring arts and culture and activity and excitement to the downtown riverfront in a way that spurs economic development and taps our creative economy. And I love that it's flexible so that we have different vendor rotation and we get our creative entrepreneurs in there that want to start something. And this will give them the opportunity to try some things out. So I am just wanting to make a comment to support those two items. And I will give up the remainder of my time.
Thank you. We have Christopher Sell followed by Nancy Malo.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris. I'm the Executive Director at Lansing 501, a local nonprofit that's aimed at attracting and retaining emerging talent to the community. We've been around since 2016. And I remember fondly our very first event. It was June 2016. It was held there in downtown Lansing along the riverfront adjacent to the former city market space. We've long thought that space to be one of the best, most picturesque areas in the entire region. And since then, have hosted many other events along that part of the riverfront. We've long thought that any tenant that would take over that space needs to be a development that's multifaceted, inclusive, draws on lots of different strengths to the community, and is appealing to a wide audience. And so candidly, I would tell you, I'm a huge fan of Michigan craft beer and thought there would probably be a brewery there someday. But when I learned about the Lansing Shuffleboard Sport and Social Club, I was ecstatic because I'm familiar with the developers, Detroit Rising, and their space in Detroit with the shipping containers. And our like-minded organizations with whom Lansing 501 works over in the East Side have nothing but great things to say about that development. And so the opportunity to have such a remarkable building that complements and is adjacent to Rotary Park and some of the other Galecki Group developments downtown, it's really, really exciting to know that we could have a tenant there that is multifaceted and is recreational and allows entrepreneurs to create different businesses, different restaurants that cater to different tastes, all in one space while also being inclusive of the community and allowing other organizations to use it periodically. I think it's just a win-win-win for everyone. And so I am so excited about the opportunity for our organization to partner with the businesses in the space there and also for the community to get it to enjoy it. So I'm just calling in to voice my support for that project. I'm really hopeful that that part will be the missing ingredient that complements Rotary Park, the riverfront, the river, and neighboring businesses and residential developments that will continue to mark Lansing's downtown as just a destination community for emerging talent. And I heard the caller earlier talking about jobs. And if we can entice more young folks to think about Lansing, this space will help move the needle on that front. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Nancy Persons Malo followed by Dan Decker.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, for allowing me time to speak. The Montgomery Drain Project, although it is needed, that is the most contaminated drain in our city. Unfortunately, having the property owners pay for part of it, you're taxing us out of our homes. I wish there was another way that that funding could be looked into, but obviously, the decision has been made. Since the beginning of the year, we've had almost recorded on crimemapping.com. We've had close to 3,000 crimes reported. That doesn't count the ones that don't end up on the crime mapping. We need more officers. I don't support defunding. There are other ways to come up with the money needed to bring in, to expand the services. We do need more social workers. We do need more programs. But until you look at the full budget of the city and start taking money from other areas, as far as I'm concerned, this is just as much discrimination as anything else by taking money from the police department. So I thank you for allowing me the time to speak. And I will divert my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Decker and then Mary Stanford.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I would like to thank Mr. Spatterfor, Mr. Betts, and Mr. Kilpatrick for coming out to Frandora Hills and met with our neighbors. We had probably about 75 people there and it was a nice evening. I think everybody thought it was profitable. I think, I agree, the Montgomery Drain update is a good project. It's a necessary project, but somebody's got to pay for it. And I think, you know, in deciding who pays for it, we have to use the same standard for all property owners. And I don't think that that's happening. I think that there's been one standard for the residential properties and another standard for the commercial properties. Now, my lot is about 30% hard surface. And so I have a land use factor of .30. That determines how much I pay. 30% of hard surface determines the amount of water that I send into the drain. It may be that my roof is slanted, my roof is flat, you know, my, my, my downspots go back, go forward. That doesn't matter. I got the 30% hard surface. Okay, fine. I'll read to that. But then we go to the commercial properties. And if you look at the ex Sears, former Sears property and the property to the east of that, which is where Dunham Sporting Goods is, those properties are about a 98 to 100% hard surface. Yet, they're being rated at a land use factor of 90%. You're saying that 90% of that is hard surface, 10% is grass. If there's grass there, please meet me there someday and show me. When I raised this issue with Mr. Kilpatrick, he said, well, they have a flat roof, so that we're discounting him 10%. Well, okay, if you're going to discount the commercial properties for special factors like a flat roof, then you also have to discount the residential properties for factors such as the slope of their land, where their downspots are. I'm saying if you want to look at just the amount of hard surface, you got to do it for both commercial and residential. Mr. Kilpatrick said that the industry standard for commercial could be up to 95% hard surface. But yet, you're rating him at 90%. I would like to know why. I think they should be rated at 95% because that's what they have. It's not fair if they're paying a different rate than I'm paying. And I think that needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Stanford followed by phone number ending with 970. Go ahead, Mary.
Good evening. You've, you know me from the past because of my support for neighborhood parks and investing in parks. And I'm here tonight to show my support for investing in the people of Lansing. I wrote a letter. You can read it if you want to. But what I really want to say to you right now is that this is an historical moment. And the decision you make about reinvesting the budget in prevention and crime prevention and human development is going to live with us for a long time. Do you want the history books that your grandchildren are going to read to reflect something you can be proud of or not? When we spend a third of our budget on enforcement, what does that say about how we view our citizens? So while I understand that there is a need for police, we really over-prioritize enforcement in our budget. And I want to support this resolution so that our children, and I love seeing Brian Jackson's little kid here, that these kids can grow up feeling safe because the people around them are happy, not because men and guns are going to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the person whose phone number ends with 970 followed by Erica Lynn.
Hello?
We can hear you now.
Oh, great. Hi, my name is David Fisher. I'm a resident of Frandora Hills. And it's disappointing that we're being victims of the development that's happening downstream in our drainage district. And to help my neighbors try and get a little more perspective on things, I raised some questions at the community meeting. And afterwards, Mr. Spatterfor asked me to email them these questions, which I did. And he acknowledged getting an email, but never followed up with any answers. And those questions were to know what the calculated runoff from our neighborhood is versus the calculated runoff for the entire project so we could better understand what we represent proportionally to this project. Along with that is what is the cost of the storm drain improvements within our neighborhood versus the cost of the entire project, again, to get a better proportion of what we're contributing to this. In another email that I sent to the clerk on October 12th to voice my appeal, I expressed that I couldn't find any information out about what they expect of us to appeal and how, I mean, we're appealing the tax, obviously, but how we go about that process. And I requested that in my email and I never got another reply. Again, we're just feeling ignored through this whole thing. And this is a big bill for our people here. And the calculations that's being used is not true runoff, how true runoff calculations are done. I work in the industry and I know. And no professional engineer would fill documents or plans using just simply what was done and presented to us. That's just not the case. So that being said, I would like some direction in how to continue our appeal and what the city's expectations are from us to do so. That hasn't been made clear. So if we could get that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn and then Sarah Jean Williams.
Thank you. Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. I am here to support the resolution that's coming out of the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I want to just zoom out a little bit because it seems like, I feel like a broken record and we all do. I think we're talking about this. But we need to zoom out very far and clarify yet again that we are not talking about an abolishment of police. This is not anti-police. This is pro-Lansing and the people of Lansing. And we, the word everyone hates and doesn't like to use, which is defund, let's just remember that that simply means reducing the budget and then reallocating those funds to many of the services and programs that are designed to prevent so many factors that we know lead to crime. We have to keep in mind that there are a lot of things that you simply cannot train out of systems or people. There are things you cannot train into them. But something that we can do is we can start reducing the, so many things that police should never be handling in the first place. Of course, they are mishandling certain things. They're not equipped. There are things that are not an inherent part of their job and they shouldn't be. There is absolutely no reason why Anthony Hulan had to be murdered on the floor of a jail cell, alone and scared, out of his mind, terrified because he should have never been there in the first place because the police should not have been handling a situation like that. And we as a city, not stopping to prioritize the people, is beyond me. It is mind-boggling that we are talking about, not prioritizing the people of our city. We have to put money and resources back into our communities, into our social services, into our schools, our education, our mental health, affordable housing, addressing food insecurity, social services, the things that have an actual effect on prevention of crime. The police do not prevent crime. They investigate them. They're in place to restore law and order. Above all, they are there to serve the people. And the way that they can do that is to step back from the things that they should not be handling in the first place. And how can we do that? We support them with a budget that reflects prioritizing the people in the city, our people. We are entering a new dawn and we, the people, are done working around systems that are not created for us. And we are done supporting people in power, in legislation, that do not serve us.
Thank you.
I wasn't done.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Jean Williams followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Williams and I am a Lansing resident. I'm a social worker and a creative person in the city. And I am calling in to voice my support for, of the resolution for the people of Lansing brought forth by Councilperson Spets and Dunbar. I just want to take a moment and really acknowledge and how much I appreciate the Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion that Councilwoman Spitzley spearheaded and ran. It really was in an environment of conversation, engagement. And I felt like people were listening. And I thought that was a rare and important thing by city leadership. And I just really want to like, highlight that. I think that's important to note. I did want to comment, a previous commenter tonight is wrong, actually, because the solution to reimagining public safety actually is community, investing in community programs and connections. I'm a social worker and a public health person, and we have data to show this, that increasing community connections decreases violence in the community. We're trying to prevent crime. Police do not prevent crimes. They show up after. Like, I don't understand how we think that like putting more cops in places where white people feel safe is going to help our over-policed black neighborhoods. This is, this is about reimagining public safety and it's also about dismantling white supremacy. And it's kind of heavy and a lot. And Councilperson Betts in a previous meeting said, it's pretty uncomfortable. And I would like to encourage people to be a little bit uncomfortable with this. Because I'm a white person. This is fairly new to me as well. And I think it's the most important thing ever possible is to invest in our Black and Brown communities and to actually show them that their life matters and to, and to tell them that. I think we can agree that we don't really need the Lansing Police Department to have really their current funding. They're not handling things very well. I cannot believe, I learned about the death of Anthony Hulan, killed at the hands of Lansing police officers in the city jail. And on top of that, Andy Shore and Chief Green lied to so many people, councilpersons, the public. I just can't imagine how Anthony's family must have felt for all of those months. Anthony's life mattered. It was important. And for you to dismiss it, Andy, and then lie about it is horrific and unacceptable. There are so many things that make you unacceptable to be the city's leader. And this is just the latest one, really. It is more than overdue for you to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ethan Schmidt followed by Loretta Stanaway. Um, thank you. We have Ethan Schmidt, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Thank you for taking the time to um, let me speak today. Uh, I just want to offer my support for the resolution to invest in the people of Lansing um, and ensure that we are not spending such a large percentage of our budget on police. Um, I also again, encourage everybody to not take, to not do half measures here. I think that taking a little bit of money away and putting a little bit of money towards social services will result in a very badly performing social services and a worse performing police department. Um, sometimes it's very tempting to go the route of doing your best, uh, to get in the middle as much as possible. And it's just one of those issues where trying to satisfy everybody is going to end up satisfying nobody. Um, so uh, I appreciate all the work that has been done by the committee to draft the resolution. I contin- I continue to urge them to um, push for decisive, bigger action um, that is going to hold everyone accountable. Um, because I think that there's a very real risk that we end up doing the worst of all worlds and taking away money from the police department without giving enough to um, other services. So thank you for all the work that's being done. Please continue to work on that. Um, I really appreciate it as a Lansing resident. And um, that's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Um, next we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Propagandy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first off, City Market. I support the concept. I still have concerns about the forty year lease being too long, the payment's too low, and not having removed the option to sell the parkland. Those are kind of sticking points for me, but overall, in general, I support the concept. I do not support the concept of the form-based code changes. I am not in favor of that at all. Um, on the police defunding, I reject the proposal. I do not accept the premise or the narrative of any of the whereas clauses. I think primarily because to me, this is putting the cart way, way before the horse. We must realize this, realize the changes sought in society before changing the police. Otherwise, we endanger both the public and the police and the proposed response teams. All of the goals of increased funding for education and healthcare, mental health, social programs, et cetera, they're all admirable and worthwhile, but they cannot be funded on the backs of the police department. If the public values these things, they must prioritize them and fund them appropriately and separately. Allocation of public resources is governmental responsibility, not to be abdicated to others. Overpolicing is just another one of the latest catchphrases. And the mayor's office bears the charter responsibility for the budget, which cannot be subverted into the hands of individual citizens. The first goal of government is safety of the citizens, and that's what taxes are paid for. Unarmed response teams would be a suicide mission if implemented before the societal changes these folks wish to achieve occurs. It would create a huge new liability for the city. And I know that I uh, hear from and know many, many people, and none of the people that I am conversing with are in support of this effort. Conversely, many of them are saying if this passes, they will leave Lansing and take their tax dollars with them. So that would be defeating the purpose of generating more income for these issues. These are good goals. This is just not the way to achieve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Propagandy, followed by Beth Kiper.
Thank you very much. Um, so many things to get through, so little time. Um, I think that it's important for all of uh, all of city council to understand that what do you think my community, the communities that are overpoliced feel when we're all saying invest in that community and you all are saying hell no? I guess my question is why, so John stated that he didn't feel safe or protected. People need to feel safe and protected. Um, you're not safe. Nobody on this panel is safe. If at any point in time, anybody out here in this community decides to take you, take anything in your house, the only thing that's going to stop them from doing that is morals, right? That's what we're trying to teach back into our community. That's the only thing saving Andy. The bird song has half of, half a sense, because other than that, he's been outside your house at six in the morning, fully armed up. The police weren't there to save you. The only thing that saved you was he has half a sense, a half a good mind, not to do something stupid. So this is what I'm trying to explain to y'all. You're not safe. The police did not make you safe. The little bit that we've been able to put into some of these young people, the acts of ass whoopings throughout the years is what keeps you safe, not police. So I think it's very important for you guys to continue to, to stop thinking that narrative of the police make you safe. They don't. They come to clean up the mess. Whenever we decide we want to make a mess of anybody, the police can just come cleaning up outside of that fact. This new resolution is coming in where the, the city is going to be enforcing healthcare, or excuse me, uh, the, the face mask things. And you know, we're, we're leaving on a city attorney to report this stuff, racial disparities, and use discretion within the police department. I just don't understand how that's even a possibility. And I think this is a really a problem of why we don't talk about the Anthony Hulan murder. Because if we just talked about that, we would know that this city attorney is inept. This city attorney will lie to us. So what is to make us believe that this city attorney is going to come back and tell us that, hey, they're over policing black people again here? Like what, we can't just, we can't just keep forgetting about what happened yesterday. I know everybody likes to get on here and play niceties and play defense, but we can't forget that these things, we, we have, we have reason to believe that this will be used in this damaging, this damaging way. We have reason to believe that the city attorney and the mayor will lie, they'll lie to us. We have reason to believe that all of you on city council have no power whatsoever to do shit and won't do anything. So what is it that you guys think you're gonna, that you're gonna get out of this situation other than a whole bunch of black people, a whole bunch of police not using discretion, just like they did in that jail when they killed Anthony Hulan? And then a whole city admin lying to us about the, the situations and the outcome. This is so dangerous and scary for me. We're asking for you to stop over policing. And people who don't have police in their neighborhoods are saying, oh, this sounds like a great idea. Send more police over there. The police are going to ticket where they are. They're going to kill where they are. They're going to beat where they are. They're going to bring false charges where they are. Reallocate funds, man. Stop playing.
Thank you.
And next we have Beth Kiper, followed by S- uh, Stan Schuck.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Kiper and I represent DLI, which is Downtown Lansing, Inc. I'm the Community Outreach and Program Manager and part of my job is to oversee downtown and understand what our downtown businesses need and what they want and what we're looking for. And we're in a time that we really need help and resources. So we do have the three hundred block, which is um, I know that we've already discussed this minimally about um, Doug Merrick's property. And he has broken down the numbers. And I think that that's really efficient in that we need to discuss these numbers because they don't lie. Whereas people have got heart and ID too, because I, I studied architectural detail, design, community service, I run my own business, and I understand what people need and what businesses need as well to, in order to function. So when I start looking at these numbers, our total was two seventy-three, one twenty-five is what we're looking at for a tax deferment. And number one, we would look at efficient utilities. So some people that aren't like, they do not favor this, but yet they don't know how many GPFs their toilet is taking, and that's gallons per flush. So typically, you're about one point two eight and he's looking at, it's supposed to be one point one six is like what is recommended. However, many people don't even know that. And he's looking at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty. And that's going to go towards these efficiencies. And that's going to go for anything from HVAC to um, heating elements. And we already know we're in November right now and we're wearing shorts. So we need to start looking at these efficiencies. We also want to look at historical preservation. This is a huge, huge aspect. So when I go into other communities and I started at Kendall in Grand Rapids, uh, one of the things that they really are rocking on is their historical preservation. So they've got these gorgeous, beautiful buildings. And when I get online sometimes and I see on social media, people are like nitpicking Downtown Lansing, that they don't have these buildings any longer. And here, Doug Merrick, he wants to renovate and he wants to build up the buildings that he already has. And there's four of them. I mean, he's got Subway, that's stationary. He's got uh, Strange Matter, and they've relocated their whole business perception about what they're going to do. And then he's got two that are vacant right now. And one, they decided that it was just time for them to retire. So pretty much he had one. So he's got a good, good base already set up. And it's something that Downtown Lansing needs. So this fifty-one thousand.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stan Schuck, followed by Rachel Biskin.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to uh, speak about the Montgomery Drain issue. Uh, start off, uh, as I was a young lad, as a seasonal employee at Red Cedar Golf Course. Uh, they, they started that project. It's, it's been a lifelong project for the Drain Commissioner over there and it's still not done. I'm sixty-two years old now. Uh, that, that's incredible. Uh, I'd like to talk about the CSO project. What an absolute scam that is. Uh, the fact of the matter is until you can separate footing drains from every home and every single neighborhood, you can never achieve sewer separation period. The runoff goes into there and right into the sewer system. It's an impossibility. You could simply fix it at the point of inception at the river.
Mr. Schuck, this point of provo comment is about pending items, not the CSO project. So if you'd like to keep that to legislative.
Incorrect. Any assessments?
No, this is about the Montgomery Drain Project.
Yeah, the, I can't speak about the Montgomery Drain Project here?
You can. I thought you were talking about the CSO. Now, please continue.
Well, all, all of that. It's the same, same, all, all the same kind of deal. It's uh, we're being charged. And to go back to impervious property, uh, we're right back to, right back to the rain tax. Where you're, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna start charging people uh, for, for runoff for the rust and the cement and everything else. We're right back to the rain tax that was found to be illegal. Uh, you know, so I, you know, I, 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 that, that's just a tough deal for people who are already paying the maximum property. You tax people right out of the city of Lansing. Uh, that, that's an incredible thing. So as far as defunding the police, I think for a city that passes millage after millage after millage after millage to fund the police, are we going to be getting that millage money back? Is that going to come off our property taxes? Uh, I think we're still paying for one right now. Uh, you know, and, and, and so I gotta wonder, you know, all this other uh, defunding you're doing. Well, you know, the retirees are feeling that pain right now because you've put almost every program and and, and, and policy, you got it. It's all on the backs of the retirees and their healthcare. Uh, I'm going to tell you, there was a fatality the day before yesterday, a city retiree, Michael Beard, God bless him, passed away from COVID. His wife Lois is in the hospital yet tonight. They came to my house tonight looking for information on the new healthcare, scared to death. And you put it all on the backs of the retirees. So to support all this defunding and everything else, that's incredible. Andy, I don't know how the hell you sleep at night, man. What you doing to these people? It's incredible. Incredible. Defund the police. That's insanity. Crotch Rocket races around his town every night. When you leave the building, listen. Listen, it's like the Isle of Man race out there tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuck. Your time is up.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Biskin, followed by April Pooley.
Hello. Um, good evening. I'm a resident in the third ward. And I want to echo what so many people have already said um, and support the proposal to invest in the people of Lansing. Um, I take issue with some of the speakers who have spoken up against it. Um, just due to the lack of facts surrounding um, their arguments. Um, it just feels to me that so many people who don't support defunding the police and reinvesting in our communities are doing so based on their gut feeling or just kind of like, okay, I think that's what's right. Um, and I'll be honest with you, I thought that at first too. The first time that I saw this popping up, I was like, wow, that's really radical. I don't know if I can get behind that. Um, but it's not radical. And just a quick Google search, and I just like encourage everyone, we're all sitting at a computer. Um, I just Googled, does more police increase safety? And there's case after case after case that says, no, there is no co- correlation um, between those two things. And I've found plenty of examples of communities that have decreased their police funding and increased community services and had a positive impact on the crime in their communities. There are so many examples out there. Um, and like others have said before me tonight, I don't, we're not safe in this community because of police officers. I don't feel safe. I'm a white woman. I don't feel safe being pulled over by a police officer because I don't trust that people are trained to behave under those types of situations. And there are, like others have said, there are certain things that are impossible to train out of people, to train out of systems. We have to look at this in a different way than the way that we've been looking at policing since the beginning of our country. Um, let's reallocate funding to services that actually will keep you safe and help you feel comfortable and cared for in our community. And you know, most importantly, our Black, Black and Brown communities are speaking up in support of this proposal. And to me, that's what we need to be looking at. You know, we have stated that racism is a public health threat across the state, the county, the city, and we aren't doing anything about it. Um, so reinve- reinvesting in our community and defunding the police is the best way that we can fight racism in our community. Um, it's time to do that and to reinvest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have April Pooley, followed by Torrin Chanel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is April Pooley. I'm a Lansing resident. And I just wanted to voice my support for the resolution by the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion to invest in the people of Lansing. I want to echo earlier comments, um, my disappointment at the watering down of this original resolution. I support the original intent of the resolution to decrease the police budget by fifty percent over the next five years. Uh, but I still support the resolution as it is, as a means of moving this forward. The Lansing Police Department has demonstrated repeatedly that it cannot and does not keep our community safe, value the lives and voices of our Black and Brown citizens. So we need to honor the needs of the most vulnerable in our community and reallocate those funds towards other community safety initiatives that involve reducing the power the police have in our community. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have uh, Torrin Chanel, followed by Daniel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sweet. All right. Uh, just like everyone else tonight, I want to uh, voice my support for the uh, resolution to invest in, in the people of Lansing. And um, also express my, my disappointment with some of the, of the language that's been used tonight to oppose it. But also the language used by council, uh, and, and you, Mr. Shore. Um, if racism is a public health crisis, what does that actually mean? You know, uh, uh, I'm, I'm Black and a white person hasn't called me the N-word in years. Um, there's no KKK rallies or anything like that. So like, are we just talking about overt racism? Or like, and I'm, this is a rhetorical question, but like, if, if racism is a true public health crisis, what does that mean to you guys? Or do you not believe in that? So, and jobs won't just, you know, I could be working an eighty K, ninety K job and get pulled over on the side of the street. And that, that don't matter to no cop. If a cop believes that black people are inherently lazy, if they are inherently more criminal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all the same old stuff, you can't train that out. Ain't no suit, ain't no tie, ain't no handkerchief in my pocket gonna make that cop treat me any differently. Because he believes that black people are lazy. Black people on, on a certain side of town don't want to work for what they got. So I, I just don't understand uh, you guys' hesitancy. I mean, I get it. Most of you are white. I get it. So you might not be able to see the full picture here, but there are people smarter than myself, smarter than all of you who have been researching and writing about this stuff for years. Their entire lives dedicated to understanding crime, police, prisons, and how they affect society. Part of reinvesting in Lansing is reaching out with, I, I think, is reaching out with. Part of reinvesting in Lansing is reaching out with, I, I think is reaching out with those, with those people. Reaching out with grassroots organizations and learning about the tactics that they're using. Some people really do not rely on the state or, or the, the police. And they have been doing things for a long time to counteract violence and sexual assault and all that stuff in their communities. So, and the last thing that I'll say is that this idea that the people who are saying this are extreme or radical is complete bull crap. The people who wanted to kidnap Whitmer, they're the radical ones. The people who, who stormed the Capitol, those are the radical ones. I don't want none of you dead. I don't want none of you to lose your life over anything like that. I hate everything that you stand for when it comes to more police and all that stuff, but there's no, there's no violence in my heart. I want it all to stop. I don't want to keep seeing people dying, white or black, but black happens to be the majority. So we have to reallocate those funds and help Lansing any way that we can. That's all I got.
Thank you. The next speaker is Daniel followed by Anna Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Daniel. This is my story. Four AM and you see something awry. What do you do? Let it go? Everyone is tired and asleep. You shouldn't have been awake, but you met someone who deeply needs your help. It's dark, it's scary, we're exhausted. There's no one to call. The leaders are at home staying, home staying safe. They are old and, and vulnerable to risk of COVID. My friend is homeless outside acting out. He looks at me in the back forty and calmly says, next train comes, I'm dead. In a minute, he's laid out on the railroad track, train sticking in his hand. Who's gonna stop him? I call nine-one-one. You're gonna do something. He's laying on the railroad, he's gonna die. Five minutes later, he's still on the tracks. He's gonna die. Why aren't the police here yet? Are you gonna defund first response? They, they were strained, but one officer, then more, came and helped this person. Another incident, a friend of mine went worth hard talking about horrid stuff. He couldn't be left alone. I knew he was having a mental health emergency, even though he just got out of the hospital. Who shows up for a welfare check on my, on my friend? Only the police. This man didn't want to go, but it was the job of the police to kindly assess his needs and help him. In the evening, a man has been stuck stranded at Cata for twelve hours. He's out of options and needs to get back to Detroit. Should we defund his lifeline? I called one Geyer Center and they were full as a shelter. I called a lead social worker on my Facebook Messenger. I, I was, you had to make sure there was something to do. I, I couldn't stand to leave this man just stuck there. She told me he would have to be COVID tested in the hospital, but there was an opening for him. Who came to sort it out when I called? A kind police officer came and called to verify that Geyer Center was full. Then he personally risked himself and transported this man to the hospital to get COVID tested. Tell me they don't care. Tell me they don't love us. Tell me that someone else could do a better job. When you strain the police, you strain the most vulnerable. Do not defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anna Parker followed by Angie.
Hi, my name is Anna Parker. I work for Sparrow Hospital. I work right in the ER most nights. On what I see is police officers bringing in patients that they could have been taken home or put other places. I am in support of reallocating the funds for the police department. What we need is mental health crisis people to come out and deal with the situation. I don't know if people realize that literally we're at capacity. We don't have places for people to, like, our regular patients to go. I had to come in as a patient a couple of weeks ago and I was treated at a nurse's station. That's how packed Sparrow is right now. So what happens is the police come in, they leave us with the patient and then the patient spends twelve hours there just to be let go and the situation could have been dealt with with a crisis counselor going on site. So that's it. That's all I have to say about the issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Angie followed by Penny Betcher.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. I just would encourage you guys to not defund the police and find other funds for the services that you want to provide as far as wraparound, mental health, helping with homelessness, all of the different social service programs. But please keep the level of police where they currently are. Do not go below that. Our community needs them. They are an asset to the citizens. Some of them may not be the best, but we still need the services that they provide and you guys need to come up with funding in a different way. Thank you very much for your time and your service.
And thank you. And the final speaker that had raised their hand before the cutoff was, is Penny Betcher.
Good evening. I'd like to speak about the arbitrarily breaking the union contracts with the fire department for healthcare. I don't know how a union contract, that's a legal document that was negotiated in good faith for which retirees gave up any other benefits in order to receive health benefits as we age can be ignored and just broken in secret. This week I moved back to Michigan to place my husband, a retired battalion chief from the Lansing Fire Department, in memory care, the cost of which is astronomical. He gave his health.
Ms. Betcher?
Yes?
I'm sorry, this is for legislative matters this evening. There is another opportunity for public comment at the tail end for any other city matter, but this is not on the legislative agenda for the evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's, I, I, there was a long agenda, so I apologize for interrupting, but we'll, we'll get to you at the end of the meeting. If you have other comment on legislative issues, please feel free, but.
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, and President Spatafor, I, I'm getting a text from one of our council members that the phone number ending in five-nine-four was, might be the person S.D. Langford that was unable to speak a couple of times. So if we can go to S.D. Langford, which is the number ending in five-nine-four.
Very good.
And maybe that didn't work either?
If you're listening and your phone number ends in five-nine-four, I'll star six to unmute your phone.
Apparently it's not that person anyway, so.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're good to go.
Very good. Mr. Clark?
We are to the referral of the show cause hearing.
General Services. No, Public Safety, excuse me.
And the referral of.
His face says I said it wrong. Okay.
Lease agreements.
These two are going to development and planning.
Okay. Okay, and number three, the special assessment for Montgomery Drainage.
Me the whole.
And number four.
Four and five, we're taking action.
Our patients.
That will hold them to the floor.
Okay. And number six, the ordinance to amend chapter six oh two.
I'll come in the hall.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President.
Sure. So as I understand it, we have on the consent agenda tonight, out of the Committee on Development and Planning, a confirmation of reappointment for James Tischler as a City of Lansing member of the local Development Finance Authority Board for term to expire September thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, as well as a confirmation of reappointment for Tiffany Dowling, Dowling, sorry, as a member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire September thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Out of the Committee on Public Services, we have a confirmation of appointment for Mr. Thomas Michael Hickson Jr. as the third ward member of the public's, I'm sorry, the Board of Public Service for a term to expire September thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Out of the Committee on Ways and Means, we have a grant request. This is, let's see, a reapproval of Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for sixteen twenty-four East Michigan Kavanaugh Road. A grant request, reapproving Michigan National Resources, Resources Trust Fund, seven hundred River Street. And a grant request, reapproving Michigan, Michigan Nat, sorry, Natural Resources Trust Fund, three forty-two East St. Joseph. And then out of the Committee of the Whole, we have a confirmation of appointment for Bart Kerrigan as the Lansing citizen, non-retiree member of the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. And I believe that's it. So with that said, I would move the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll just remind folks, if you wish to pull something, this is the time to do it. Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, on the consent agenda, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. And that takes us to resolutions by the, for action, starting with the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion regarding the resolution to invest in public services.
Yes, Councilmember Spitzley, Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Brandon Betts and Councilmember Kathy Dunbar to look at the police budgeting and reinvention of public safety. So we have gone through this resolution, working with both Councilmember Betts and Dunbar and our Diversity and Inclusion Committee. One of the, you know, there are a number of changes to the original resolution and I read it on my phone, which is why I'm looking down. One of the things that was, one of the things that the original resolution called for was the creation of an ad hoc committee on public safety transformation. Based on comments from committee members and discussing and, and public comment. The language has been changed and the Diversity Committee will now create a subcommittee on public safety transformation. One of the things that we also looked at, the original language called for, I'm sorry, I have, I have really bad allergies as well and my voice is, is creepy. The original language called for a reduction by fifty percent of, of the police budget over five years. There was a robust discussion regarding that particular phraseology and that particular call. Based on that, the language was changed to, bear with me for a minute, I'm trying to find that specific language. The, the language was changed to significantly reduce. I apologize. I, I'm sorry. Peter, I'm having trouble finding that language. Can you help me, please?
Yeah, just a moment. The community budgeting process will recommend a significant reduction in the percentage of the City of Lansing budget allocated to policing. The process will be focused on finding ways to reinvesting funds made available through priest budget reductions in other pro, city programs.
And which number is that? That is three.
First found in item one B.
Thank you. I apologize, everyone. So that, that's the language that was moved out of committee for discussion tonight. We've gotten a number of comments to the resolution, both for and against. I think that the overall, the overall feeling of the committee is that, you know, the subcommittee is a great idea. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is the perfect vehicle to have a subcommittee to look at and make recommendations for changes in reimagining the police department. And, and, you know, focusing on community outreach and whatever. And we want to make sure that whoever's on that subcommittee, you know, has the opportunity to make those recommendations. The, again, the language that calls for a significant reduction was a, was a language put in, in place of the fifty percent reduction over five years to bring it out to the floor for discussion. With that, so that we can start the discussion, I will move the resolution. I will thank everybody who came and participated in the committee. I think we had really good discussion and we had a great participation. I, I think it's important to note that I continue to be a strong proponent of reimagining public safety. I think that it is important that we are able to do a review of ourselves, review of how we conduct public safety in the city and move towards recommended changes that'll make us do better. I, I will, I will admit, I am not there to, and I, I am not there as a supporter of a blanket reduction or def, or a defunding of the police budget. But I do think that we need to look at our public safety in a different way. We need to look at how we interact with folks who have mental health issues, how we provide those services, how we look at the jail. I don't think the jail, I think we, we need to talk about getting rid of the jail. I think that we need to look at how we interact more with community groups and organizations that are already having boots on the ground and how we can support them in the critical mission of reaching out to our youth and showing them a better way. And so with that, I will move the resolution for discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. The motion has been made. Are there, is there discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm inclined to support this resolution for four main reasons. And the first one being that the way that our city's finances and the police department budget, the current trajectory is not sustainable. Our total general fund and our total amount owed to unfunded liabilities continues to grow and continues to take more of the city's overall budget. Same as the police department's budget is currently approximately a third of what Lansing spends and growing. So if you just look at a mathematical projection there, it's just not sustainable. Moreover, the police should focus on doing, basically focus on more serious crimes, armed robberies, home invasions, things like that is what the police should be able to respond to. Not necessarily for mental health crises, drug addiction matters, homeless matters, protest suppression matters. And what we're talking about now, public, being a public health inspector as well. I think that we should make the police job easier for them by giving them less things to have to deal with so that they can respond more to the serious matters. And another reason is, let's be real, it's the criminal injustice system. We, we know that because poor people always get the brunt end of it. People of color are disproportionately affected and every, people don't even argue that anymore. And people who come in contact with the criminal justice system have long lasting negative effects that sometimes they can't overcome. And the police are the gatekeepers for that. They're, they're the first contact. They're the people that make, that get people involved, decide user discretion, whether to arrest somebody or not, or whatever they want to do. So, and again, this is not anti-police, in my opinion, it's more pro-police by let's make their job easier and give them less. Responsibilities so they can focus on the more serious ones. And also, this should be easy for everyone to support because what we're asking to do is to take. Another initial step. We're not saying defund the police or reallocate all this money right now. We're saying let's look into a desired outcome of increased public safety and the desired outcome. Of police having less responsibilities. So to be able to set up a committee or whatever the next step is, should be easy for everybody to come up with. And in the language, as far as some of those whereas, I did pretty much agree with most of the whereas. But it also said, invest in education, it said, community budgeting process, it said, open and transparent. And again, the desired outcome is. A better result for a lot of people who are usually underserved. So as far as taking this first step, I support it for sure. And I mean, I support the general idea of having the police have less things to do so that they can concentrate more on the serious things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, other questions, comments, discussion? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Hussein.
Am I unmuted? I am. Okay. Um, let me first say that, you know, I appreciate, I really appreciate the work of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Um, Committee in vetting this resolution. Um, I think they've had this since uh, late July, maybe early August. And I know that they've um, engaged, you know, deeply on this issue. Uh, I certainly appreciate uh, my colleagues' comments tonight, uh, both Councilwoman Spitzley's as well as uh, Councilmember Jackson's. Um, in the comments that we have received from the public, both tonight uh, via email, text, calls. Um, you know, as part of our our constituent contact groups, et cetera. Um, I think the idea of reimagining um, public safety, reforming police department budgets. Um, you know, really strengthening officer accountability, citizen oversight. Um, the demilitarization of of police departments, um, and even even defunding, right? These are um, you know, things that are are being discussed, these are things that communities are looking at. Um, they've looked at, um, you know, the work continues. Um, and and to be fair, you know, I think we've done a lot of this work uh, here in the city of Lansing. So um, you look at our current chief, uh, who has initiated some thirty policy changes. And we know uh, that, you know, there are additional policy changes that need to be made. Uh, we have created a social worker division, um, and we are looking to grow, obviously, that division. Um, we have, I think, been much more thorough as a body uh, in vetting police board uh, commission um, candidates. And and we approved a, you know, I think it was in September, we approved a number of budget priorities. Um, you know, the, I guess the priority that jumps out to the forefront of my mind is the the five hundred thousand dollars that we asked the administration. Um, to take a look at for increasing our social worker division by four social workers, um, as well as uh, an administrative assistant. You know, and we expect, we expect that the administration will adopt that into the recommended budget. Um, you know, and as Councilwoman Spitzley said, I think it may be time for us to publicly uh, call on the mayor uh, to explore or the administration to explore every possible. Um, way to close up our city lockup once and for all. Um, you know, I don't think we'd be, you know, outside of our bounds and asking for that uh, for that to, you know, be looked at. I think that said, you know, as we close out two thousand and twenty, as we enter into uh, two thousand and twenty-one, you know, we know that uh, this work will continue. Um, and the community, the whole of our community, I think deserves to be a part of this work. Uh, so I appreciate the whereas is where we talk about the open uh, you know, process and the transparency. Um, as it pertains to the funding and reallocating specifically, um, you know, this has been a huge topic of conversation. Uh, and this will continue uh, to be a huge kind of topic of conversation, I think, in the next year. Uh, particularly as candidates position themselves, um, candidly, right, to run for uh, for office. Um, although I have historically uh, supported a a public safety department, a strong, you know, public safety department that truly aims to protect and serve. Um, a public safety, you know, department that um, you know, that that evolves and grows uh, and gets better with time. I don't necessarily have a problem uh, with the members of the DEI uh, deeply engaging our community. And exploring what the funding would look like uh, for the city of Lansing and how the funds might be reallocated. And then reporting back to council, at least that's what I, when I look at this resolution, that's what I take from it. Um, one thing has been clear to me, uh, as we have discussed this this issue locally, is that although folks might be using the same words. I think we are all kind of speaking a different language, to be to be candid. Um, if the DEI Committee um, engages in this work and is able to present a report of what this would look like in Lansing, you know, I for one, uh, would absolutely commit. Um, to to taking the report in every part of my ward, I would expect other ward representatives to do the same thing as well as that large representative. Um, and and having conversations with residents and business owners. Um, and, you know, so that they understand, you know, what the what the effort of the funding would look like in the city of Lansing and what it would mean for our department. Right, our department, not other departments, but our department. Um, you know, what would it mean for the number of patrol officers and uh, you know, what about the traffic division? Um, and and our cold case unit and our VCI uh, unit, right? Or maybe, you know, is it simply reworking contracts uh, and and linking in lease agreements and selling of equipment that we no longer need? Uh, what in the world, I think that's what people want to know, what does this mean when we talk about reimagination and reallocation, what does that mean for the city of Lansing? Um, I expect that with everyone speaking the same language. Um, that, you know, we would really be able to have informed conversations on these issues, particularly, I think. As they, you know, kind of become central onto the election process next year. What I'm not understanding when I read this resolution um, is why we need um, a subcommittee. I'm going to be very honest, I wasn't part of the committee uh, conversation. I don't understand why we need a subcommittee of a committee uh, so that the individuals can do work that the committee couldn't probably should do. Um, only then to have the committee members essentially make recommendations to themselves. I I I don't understand um, the need for that. Um, when the resolution was drafted uh, by Councilmember Betts and it was made public, I think, in early June. Um, and then it was officially introduced on on June thirteenth, I would assume we didn't have a committee. Um, or a body um, that seemed appropriate to him uh, in order to do this work, right? Um, and and I think the original resolution, as Councilwoman Spitzley said, called for uh, an ad hoc committee for that reason. Um, however, as a result of this body declaring uh, racism as a as a public health crisis on June twenty-sixth, second, sorry. Um, and, you know, the city did establish a new permanent standing committee on equity, diversity and inclusion, and that was on July twenty-seventh. Uh, that group met began meeting on August third. Since that time, I had to look up the uh, the agendas in order to get this information. But since that time, the committee has had the CSO in um, to discuss police budgeting, the department's social worker in to discuss her role. And what an expanded division might look like. Um, they've considered and approved budget policies. Um, the the aforementioned budget policies in addition to others uh, to further, you know, reform and and kind of reimagine the department. Uh, and has vetted the resolution that that we're talking about tonight. So in my opinion, the committee or the uh, the work has begun. Um, I I believe that that committee could easily uh, set guidelines for the gener, basically the generation of this report. Um, these these recommendations um, that are called for in this resolution uh, that would really educate, I think, our citizens on what defending would look like. Uh, and what that would mean for our police department and public safety response. I think they could identify professionals. Um, that should be maybe a part of that conversation. I think of accountants as an example. Um, they could set benchmark dates, completion uh, deadlines, and then they could deeply engage the community in in the work. And that's what I expect of this committee. I'm going to be very honest with you. I expect a deep, deep, deep engagement. I think of uh, public safety circa maybe two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen. Uh, Councilman Dunbar, you know what I'm talking about, Councilwoman Woods, you know what I'm talking about. Councilmember uh, Garza, you know what I'm talking about. Um, you know, some of the work that we engaged in, we we took important issues, there was deep citizen engagement. Um, you know, one year we met every single Friday as we worked on a medical marijuana ordinance, and we had hundreds, if not thousands, of people uh, participate. Uh, we took other issues into churches and schools and community centers and the like to create access. And we did all of that, this committee did all of that, while having several other issues referred um, to the to the committee for consideration. Um, I think this can, committee can do that too. Um, if I'm on the committee next year, um, I will be okay, as I have in the past, um, with the serious nature, I think, of the work. Um, and, you know, and then the fact that, you know, attendance and 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 ultimate effort, I think, will be paramount. So again, I'm not opposed, uh, Councilman Betts and Councilwoman Dunbar, um, you know, to, you know, this committee putting together a report. Um, and 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 making sure that folks in the city of Lansing know um, what a defunding and a reallocation would look like here in the city of Lansing. So that we can have informed conversations. Um, I just, I just don't know that we need a a subcommittee to do that. The other piece, and the last thing I'll say, is that this resolution right now reads, there's parts of it um, that read as a strong endorsement of the funding. Uh, when we, I think, and more importantly, the people of Lansing, without without the work being done, right? We don't really, really even know what the funding looks like, or or what that means for our police department and our ability to have a strong public safety response. Um, and so, you know, or even our ability to pay for it, if, you know, we think about it, our ability to pay toward our retiree pension and healthcare obligations. Um, so we simply don't know, and I struggle with that aspect uh, as well. And so I wanted to make sure that uh, my comments were part of the public record um, before voting on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Hussein, uh, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. I think um, your concerns are my concerns. But we needed to get the resolution out on the floor for discussion so that the full council could have a discussion. I think that um, you know, having an ad hoc committee, not, I'm sorry, I apologize, having a subcommittee as part of the committee. Was the compromise. Um, and I think the thinking was that um. You know, we would have a number of people um, from the public be a part of that subcommittee. But I agree that the work could be done under the umbrella of the DEI Committee. Um, and we we could do our public outreach, we can, we can engage. I I remember the medical marijuana meetings, I was, I was part of that group that met every week. Um, and I think we can do it, um, we can do it under the umbrella of the DEI, I agree with that. Um, I I I struggle with, and and I, it is not a secret, and I've been very. Open and indirect about it, I struggle with the language, any language that talks about reducing the police budget. I think that that is a cart before the horse, it really is. You know, if you're going to do recommendations and we're going to look at reimagining, and we're going to look at, you know, what it looks like to to um, divert funding or. Or reimagine our public safety. Um, and 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 Councilmember Betts knows that, knows I've I've mentioned this to him, so, you know, I I'm. Not saying anything I haven't said to him, putting a percentage or saying something of like significantly reducing the budget. To me is is a nonstarter because I believe that the discussion needs to be made on. What recommendations we're doing, and then we talk about how that's going to be paid. Of course, you know, we're looking at, you know, the police budget, we could also be looking at the HRCS budget, we could also be looking at. You know, the neighborhood budget, we could be looking at a number of budgets, but I think that, you know, language that. In the resolution that says, you know, you know, a significant, you know, a specific percentage or talks about significantly reducing. Is is problematic to my, to me as well.
Councilmember Wood.
I believe Councilmember Garza was before me, I'm sorry.
The the machine picks who goes first and it says.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Skynet has spoken, Councilmember Wood.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I too appreciate the work that the EDI Committee has done. Um, but this is not something at this point that I am willing to support. For a number of reasons. Um, one, as you talked about the subcommittee, I I absolutely agree with Councilmember. Um, Hussein and some of what Councilmember Spitzley has said. Um, I believe this is something that um, is, if it's going to happen, should be happening in the EDI Committee. And not by a subcommittee. Um, there are ways to bring the public to the table. Um, again, we've done it in a number of different um, venues where. The voting members were the council, but there was, the public was there to weigh in. Um, when I again, think of the medical marijuana as a, as an example. We had hundreds of people that came forward and we listened to all of their comments. And many of their questions and things we took back to the city attorney and we questioned as we were going through um, the ordinance. Second of all, um, we had discussed this as part of ways and means. And one of the things that um, we brought out and brought back to council. Was out of the Lansing Police Department budget, forty-three point one percent of the budget. That we are currently in is allocated for legacy cost. We currently have a number of people that are waiting to speak at the end of this meeting. That are retirees that are talking about healthcare cuts. When you start looking at reducing the budget, you have to figure out what you're talking about. Um, I know that I have heard um, either through post or through um. Uh, newspaper interviews and things like that, that some of the council members supporting this don't want to see any cost, any. Uh, cuts to legacy costs, which means then the other largest part of this. Um, budget is salaries for police officers. So in retrospect, what you're saying then is that you're looking at cutting police officers. And so um, we have had the chief before us at Committee of the Whole, and I think we've had him at Public Safety. Say that the um, number of police officers per per population, we are lower than what a number of communities are. We have um, put together budget priorities. And moved those forward at the time, not knowing that the administration. Um, was in the process of cutting retiree healthcare. And if the legacy cost, um, which we all are aware of and we've all talked about. Are um, prevalent out there, the idea that if we were to cut the police budget. That this wasn't going into looking at legacy costs versus other cost. Um, you know, I I I have concerns for. We have talked about the fact that we added and asked the mayor to consider additional money for training and for um. Uh, mental health workers. But if we can't even keep our promises to retirees. Um, for the work that they've done and to pay for their healthcare, how are we going to add additional staff? Um, for some of these other projects? So uh, um, I think that there is a lot more work that needs to be done in the committee before something moves forward. I I understand we're getting close to the end of the year. I understand that um, you know, there's a concern of whether um, the next committee would take this up. But I think there's ways of putting charges in there that for the next committee to continue the work um, that's out there. But at at this, I, you know, I'm not supportive of this resolution and will not be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Garza?
All right, thank you, Council President. So um, I guess I would like to speak and uh, explain my vote tonight as well. And I also will not be supporting this uh, resolution by Councilwoman Betts. Uh, I do appreciate all the work the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee has done. Uh, I do believe in investing in public services, but I'm I'm also a strong believer in public safety. Um, since I got on council, I really fought hard to get a community police officer in my ward, my ward didn't have one. And uh, that's what uh, a a number of my constituents, you know, wanted to see. They wanted to see more community policing in the neighborhood, and we just weren't getting that in the second ward. Now, you know, I just got the uh, LPD monthly report from the Board of Commissioners. And then we're talking about homicide, rape, felonious assault, robbery, arson, burglary, larceny. Um, the total went up by two point nine percent uh, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. I mean, and you talk about felonious assault, that went up thirty-eight point five percent. Robbery, eighteen point seven percent, arson, a hundred percent. Um, stolen vehicles up sixty-two point seven percent from last year. We talked about domestic violence, um, we're up from last year total, and and this is only from October thirty-first, the report ended October thirty-first. You know, last year, the total two thousand nineteen for domestic violence was eleven hundred and thirty-one calls for service. This year, at the end of October, uh, they're already at fourteen hundred and fifteen. Um, I mean, drug overdoses is up, I mean, another two hundred and fifty-five, um, I'm sorry, from two oh one from last year to two fifty-five. You know, when we talk about um. Defunding the police, you know, over the last, what, fifteen, twenty years, I believe we have been defunding the police. You know, we had roughly three hundred police officers in the city of Lansing, and our, in our population continues to grow, and now we're right around two hundred. So when we talk about defunding the police, I believe we've been defunding the police. And, you know, my understanding is the City Hood did a poll on twenty-six neighborhoods in the city of Lansing. And it came back with uh, six thousand responses, thirty percent want the funding and seventy percent do not support this. Uh, you talk about Detroit News did a poll and seventy percent support the police as well. You know, and I I found it a little concerning, I got a lot of. You know, and I found it a little concerning. I got a lot of emails and phone calls and voice messages, and most of those people weren't even from the city of Lansing and not even my ward. Now, I did have numerous people from my ward reach out to me, and they were all in support of not defunding the police. So I was elected by the people, and I'm definitely going to do my part, and I am supporting the public safety in our city. So I'm a no vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you. I'm not going to try to change votes right now because there's really no point. A vote no on this, a vote for white supremacy. We've been talking about this for a long time. I think that we're all frustrated at this point. Jeremy, to your point on crime increasing, we have more cops today than we did last year and the year before that, and crime is still going up. Cops don't prevent crime. Cops obviously don't prevent crime. Cops respond to crimes. And that's the important thing here. We're trying to build opportunities for black and brown neighbors to make sure that they are supported, and that is so very important. Cops don't support people. Cops put people in prison. Cops kill people. Cops kill people in jail. This is the problem. We can't be addressing all of our society woes with police. Now, to Carol, you were talking a little bit about legacy costs and things like that. I have already said on the record that we are not looking at legacy costs here. We're not trying to cut costs for retirees. We're not trying to cut anything like that. This is going to be a reduction of police because, as Jeremy said, we're not here going to say, oh, we're going to have all these police officers still here. We're going to make their jobs easier, which means that we're going to need less policed in the future. That is what our goal is here. You know, the number of police per population, I know that Chief Green brings this up a lot, but it's, you know, we have more police than the suburbs do, and the suburbs are doing fine. So, you know, I don't have much to say. This is really depressing. Of course, we are in a white supremacist system. This is kind of what we deal with, and white supremacy is a serious thing. And, you know, with this, all we're doing is creating a research project. As Jeremy, or as Brian said, as Kathy said time and time again, and as Adam said tonight, the whole purpose of this thing is to set a framework to do the research in the future. I'm not asking you to defund the police today. I'm not expecting you to fund the police tomorrow. I'm expecting you to vote yes so that this city can move forward and start doing the research to figure out what the future of our society looks like. Because as long as my black and brown neighbors are dying at the hands of police, when Anthony Hulan died, when all of these people are dying, enough is enough. We need to vote yes on this thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Wood?
Brandon, I take exception to your first comments and the fact that a vote against this is a vote for white supremacy. You know, I think that that is uncalled for. We did not condemn you or Kathy on the writing of this or make derogatory comments. We thank you for your work, and I realize you're frustrated. I realize that you've put a lot of work in this. But I think name-calling is below you. And I just think that that's something that is not acceptable.
I didn't call you names, Carol.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar?
Sorry, I had to find my unmute button. I'm not going to beat this horse because everybody's heard what we've said for the last few weeks. But I would like to address two things. One, thank you, Brandon, for saying we have more cops this year and crime still went up. Crime happened this year primarily, the increase was COVID. We have vulnerable populations, massive unemployment. People don't have any money. That's what happens when you don't have opportunity. When people are employed and they have, you know, a purpose, we don't have that kind of crime. We didn't have city centers open. We have been isolating our kids. They have no way to get their energy out. And I'm not saying all kids that have pent up energy go out and commit crimes. That's not what I'm saying. But I am saying that all of those factors, domestic violence, anybody that's in the domestic violence realm will tell you that forcing people to stay home together in a domestic situation that's already violent, where there's no escaping the house because of COVID, is going to increase calls for service and abuse. And that we saw across the board. But you also saw people like Tashmika Torak, who works with groups, who deals with domestic violence, sexual abuse, all those things, said that the police don't help those situations. So I just wanted to point that out, you know, COVID and unemployment, isolation, all those things, crime's going to go up. It's not a factor of police or lack thereof. And I used to, I used to think about where the support came from, when people would send stuff to me. And I remember my early days on council going, what do I care what somebody from Detroit thinks? Why are they trying to influence my vote here? What do I care if somebody from Grand Rapids sends me a letter that says I support defunding the police? And then I started to think, why the heck did we write a resolution to Saint Petersburg, Russia, urging their leadership over there not to persecute LGBT members of their community? Because voices matter. Like, why would we bother? Why would we bother taking a stand on any issue that's outside of our, but we have, but we have. And so I don't discount support that comes in from other areas anymore. You know, the fact is that we have an issue here, and I'm not, you know, the votes will fall where they fall. But I just really needed to put out there that, you know, we really do have to dig into the origins of crime and don't assume that there is an exact ratio of more cops, less crime, or vice versa. I just don't believe that that's how it works. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. I appreciate your remarks. Councilmembers Spitzley, Betts, and Jackson. Councilmember Spitzley?
Well, I think I'm going to wait until everybody has, you know, made their comments. Because I don't want to, as my mom would say, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I think that the discussion and the resolution has merit. And I don't want, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to stop talking about this or stop talking about ways that we can, you know, again, reimagine public safety or how we can continue to do the work. And so I don't want, I want to continue the discussion. And so, and, you know, continuing the discussion of the umbrella of the DEI committee, I think is probably appropriate. And so, you know, my inclination is to move to withdraw the resolution, bring it back to committee so we can continue to have discussions and maybe come to a resolution. But I want to see what everybody else is thinking. And if there's no way we're going to come to a resolution on this resolution, come to an agreement on this resolution or even a compromise, then maybe we do just continue to move forward. But I would think, I think that would be a shame because I do think that there are merits to the resolution. I do, I believe in the spirit of the resolution. I just have concerns about the black and white language of reducing funding. You know, if that language wasn't in there, I think it would be palatable. But at this point, what I'm thinking is because, you know, I'm thinking to move and to bring it back to committee to continue to work on trying to, you know, reach consensus. You know, government is what government is. If both people, both sides are unhappy, then we're probably, you know, right where we need to be. And, you know, it's a process. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to be resolved overnight. And I think that, Brandon, you know, it's not a research paper. I'm not inclined to do a bunch of studies and then put a report on the shelf and never see it again. I'm looking for real-world solutions to real-world problems. And I believe that if one person in the city of Lansing feels that they're over policed, that they're not safe, we need to look at that. But we've got people also on the other side, as Jeremy said, and as an at-large member, I have to look at that too. And so I'm trying to figure out how we move forward to look at this extremely serious situation and what's the mechanism to do it. Thank you.
Just to clarify, you did not make a motion?
I'm going to move, I am going to move that we withdraw.
Okay. So you've withdrawn your motion and that's it? Or are you also moving to, you said something about committee?
I'm moving to withdraw the resolution and move it back to DEI.
Okay, very good. So the motion before us that we will now discuss, and I will, you can, if you want to speak to the other motion, it will be in order. Just so I'm clear what's in front of us. So in front of us is a motion to re-refer the resolution back to the committee on equity, diversity, and inclusion. Is that correct, Councilmember Spitzley? Okay.
President Spatifor, point of order.
Yes, Councilmember Wood?
I do believe, and will have to check with Jim, but I do believe that if the chair of the committee wishes to pull the resolution, that this isn't a vote item, that they can pull a resolution and have it go back to committee.
I'm not familiar with that, so I'm going to ask Mr. Smirka to please tell me.
There are different methods, you know, you could refer to somewhere else, but the chair of the committee can pull it back.
Councilmember Spitzley, would you like to pull it back or would you like the council to vote on that?
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like a brief discussion, please.
Okay, we'll have a brief discussion on it. Councilmember Jackson, Betts, Dunbar. Councilmember Jackson, you're up first, please.
Thank you. A few things as far as possibly pulling it. I would not object to that only because I don't want to see the conversation stop, honestly. A few points just that I didn't make earlier is, one is that, I mean, realistically, we are not engaging all the people that might be affected by this. I mean, let's be real, the people that might most likely be affected, people that have had police contact, people that are used to police contact or see police contact all the time, they're not watching our city council meetings for the most part. There's exceptions. They're not, they probably don't even know who we are, and they just know what their reality is, and they survive every day and try to survive every day. So if we go back to council, I mean, if I have to be the one to try to find some people, I'm sure I can. But there are some other opinions out there that we haven't heard. And also, as far as the pro-public safety, I think we are all pro-public safety. I know I certainly am. And if somebody tries to break in my house or something like that, I would expect the police to come as quick as they can. And they can only come as quick as they can if they're not doing a bunch of other little things. And I bet if you ask the police officers, they would love not to have to respond to the mental health crisis that's going on, like two or three officers deep, and that's like half the whole night squad that's going to respond to the park where somebody's yelling and screaming, when there could be, and this might be the first step, is to get a, and I think one of our speakers said it earlier, like a crisis response team that's trained in mental health. Because mental health, for example, is probably a vast majority of police contacts. And why people commit crimes in the first place is because they're not in balance like that. So pro-public safety, yes, that would still mean reimagine public safety. Because again, all the people that has named serious offenses so far, like when there's shootings every day or X, Y, Z, yes, we need the police to respond to those, and they will be better equipped to do that if they had less on their plate. So engage more people is hard to do, and that's something I've struggled with for three years now, is trying to get everybody involved. And, you know, don't give up on the conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatifor. To Councilmember Wood, I apologize if you felt like I was calling you a white supremacist. However, I was not. I'm speaking to systems, and there are systems of white supremacy that some of us have chosen to uphold and some of us continue to choose to uphold, and one of those is policing. We have shown that the institution of policing is a white supremacist institution that has been built out of slave patrols into a system now that disproportionately targets black and brown residents in Lansing very specifically. We see that they are two times more likely to be pulled over. We see that they are three times as likely to be arrested when they're pulled over. We also see that seventy-eight percent of youth arrests are black. The data that we see on council that has came to us right now, we know that there's a lot more from the pullovers to the harassment, to the jail desk, to all of these things that are going on that we need to address today. And that is the reason why I say that a vote against this resolution, a vote against researching how to get rid of a system of white supremacy and replace it with something that's more equitable for all is a vote for white supremacy. I know that this is uncomfortable, and I said this during the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. This is a really uncomfortable position, especially for you and I, Carol, as white people. We are not attuned to this work, but I will tell you what, there have been people who've been looking at this and researching this and doing this work for years and years and years and years, and you and I are now just coming to the table. We need to listen to those people and we need to be paying attention to what they're saying because they're right on this issue. And those people are the people of Lansing. Those people are the twenty percent of people in Lansing who are black. Those are our black and brown communities who are asking for us to do this work. And that is the reason why I put this resolution forward, and this is the reason, Pat, I don't think that this should go back to committee. I don't think that there is a point right now where I think that this came out of committee with unanimous vote. I think that the committee is happy with this, and I think that we need to have a vote today to see where people stand on this issue. And if they don't stand in the way that we want, we will rewrite this resolution and do it again in a different way. But we need a vote tonight because it is time for us to get off the fence, stop being spineless politicians, because we all are, including myself, and actually put ourselves forward and say, we want a future for black and brown residents, for black and brown kids that is free of the oppression of policing in the future. And that is, that is so very important to me, and I think that it's important to all of you too. I mean, I was surprised that Adam said that, you know, this is something that he thinks that we need to be looking at investigating, and that's what this committee is doing. We are doing the research. We are investigating this. We're figuring out the best way to make a non-racist, anti-racist system, because that is my goal, and I know that's the goal of this council. If I did not think that this council could be put to task to actually do this work, I wouldn't have introduced this resolution. I would have done things. I would have protested in the streets. I would have, you know, done all sorts of things. But I believe that this council is ready to move this city into the future, and I expect this council to move it. And if this council's not going to move this city in the future, we're screwed. We're just a whole bunch of conservative people sitting around not doing anything. And I would be worried in that because I trust all of us on this council to be at least willing to take the step to do the research. That is all we're asking for at this point. So, Pat, again, I don't think that we should hold off on this thing. I don't think we should put that back into committee. This has been in committee for months and months and months. We have heard public comment after public comment after public comment. Thirty people per time that we're in that, thirty people every single time telling us they're supportive. They want this done. They want this done, and they want this done now. The longer we wait, the more people die. The longer we wait, the more people get put in prison. The longer we wait, the more white supremacy just eats away at our people of color. Our people in southwest Lansing don't get the investment. People in east Lansing don't get the investments that they want. The people, nobody's going to get any investment, and we're just going to keep living under a system of white supremacy, and that is unacceptable. And that is the reason I'm calling for us to have this vote, and I'm calling on every single councilperson here to vote yes on this resolution tonight. And that is all I'm going to say. I think that we should have this vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar?
I want to voice my support for actually having the vote tonight. I only had one other thought, and it was about the idea behind the subcommittee. And I just wanted to throw out there that, you know, we are, we are an infrastructure, a political infrastructure, and there are many people who are affected by what we're talking about here who are not a part- who are not a part of the political infrastructure. And as um, Councilmember Bets had said, you know, the the voices that need to be heard and the voices that need to be leading the conversation are not in our political infrastructure. And it really does shape the the discussion, who's leading the conversation. Um, so I I I do think it's very important, and I'm I'm sure if if the idea, if somebody decides that they don't want the subcommittee and we have to do it through committee, I would still push that we create a structure that allows folks who are affected the most to be the ones leading that conversation. Um, but that that seems so silly to say right now after everything that's already been said here. So I would just, I'm I'm voicing my support that we vote tonight.
Okay, I see no more hands in the motion before us, is to re-refer this. Councilmember Spitzley?
Okay. Really, uh, okay. You know, it 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 pains me, and if we wanna vote, we'll 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 vote. But here's the deal, you know, were you here that we've been working on this since July? Do you know how long we worked on the medical marijuana resolution? We worked on it for a number of years. You know, we've been on this for a few months, and I, and and a committee. And I, and and it, and it frustrates me because, you know, it's it, it's not something, government doesn't work. Government doesn't work the way, I'm sorry, Councilman Bets, that you want it to. And I, and I apologize for saying that, I'm a, I'm a little frustrated right now, so I'm trying to pick my words very closely, very carefully. You know, we, I know we've had twenty to thirty people commenting every committee. I've also had twenty to thirty people emailing me, twenty to thirty people telling me, you know, to be very thoughtful in what I am doing, um, supporting that we need to look at reimagining public safety, but urging me not to go so far as to defund the police. Again, do I think that we need to look at our public safety and re- and relook at the way we provide that to our City of Lansing residents? I I absolutely agree that we do, but, you know, simply throwing out a word of defunding or significantly reducing um, without a basis of what that means, it to me is irresponsible. That's what I feel is irresponsible, and I feel it's irresponsible, and this is a disservice to the people who feel that they are overpoliced and feel that they wanna change, and to people that don't wanna change. I think that we have to look at, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. Let's look at it through the lens of, if we wanna have more community service, what does that mean and how much is it gonna cost? If we're gonna get rid of the jail, which I wholeheartedly think that's the first thing that should be on the list, how much is, how much is that gonna cost, and if, and what is that money can be used for? But to just blanketly say, and you know that this is my sticking point, to blanketly say we're gonna defund or blanketly say we're gonna significantly reduce, I think is premature, and I do think it's irresponsible. I am willing to bring it back to committee, to continue to work on this, um, to start the subcommittee, um, to to do whatever we can to put these recommendations to the administration to start real change. If this resolution dies today, I will just start the committee in the DEI. I will start a subcommittee, or I will start a work group in DEI. I don't want that to happen. I am trying to work within the confines of your resolution, because I respect what you're trying to do. But I can't be, I can't be pressured to vote on something that I feel is not ready and that isn't going to do what we want it to do, which is take a very clinical look at how we do public safety in this community, and then figure out a structure and a funding source so that it is actually successful. I am not gonna put words on a paper and then have, either have it vetoed or not have the funding to implement what we're trying to do. I just can't do that. And so for me, that's why I am suggesting we either bring it back or we vote on it and let the chips fall where they may, and we'll just continue to do the work in the in the DEI committee. We can do that as well. Um, that's about as blunt as I'm ever gonna be in a, you know, in a committee or you're in council, but that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Councilmembers Spitzley, thank you. Councilmember Bets, then Dunbar.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Pat, for your your concerns. I think that uh, I'm I'm a little bit confused, because this resolution literally is set up to do that research. So at what point, and and you passed this thing out of committee saying that you supported everything that was in it, but now the opposition comes in and you say that you're not comfortable with it. So I'm confused, where do you stand? Do you not stand with the goals of reinvesting in the people of Lansing, or do you? And that's the reason I want this vote tonight, because we can't keep sending this thing back to committee, it's never gonna get done in committee. There's nothing, there's no substantive thing that anybody has said so far that is something that we can put into this resolution. So it's just, it's so frustrating, and you know, Pat, people are dying today. People are dying tomorrow, people are gonna die three days from now, because we aren't doing the work in the process now, we have to start this process someday.
Brandon, Brandon, I am not gonna allow you to, I'm not gonna allow you to lecture me on white supremacy or racial issues. That is not gonna happen. You are not gonna lecture me on white supremacy or racial issues. Now, I really try to work with this, but I will not, you will not lecture me on that.
Pat, there's, there's no lecturing going on.
Okay, you have, you crossed the line here, and you need to step back.
There is no lecturing going on.
Councilmembers.
And.
Councilmember Bets, Councilmember Spitzley, let's take a.
Uh, President Spatafor, I was in the middle of a statement when I was interrupted. May I finish? Or is?
I was asking both of you to take a beat. I was asking both of you to take a beat. Councilmember Bets, please continue.
I think that we need to have a vote on this thing tonight. I think that we need to all make a decision on whether or not we're gonna support this, and whether or not we are going to do the work that we need to do to dismantle white supremacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Bets. Councilmember Dunbar?
Composing, um. I believe that we have heard from folks who do not support this resolution. I get that. Whether they weigh in equally, I think there was somebody that said there's seventy percent say, don't defund. I wanted to point out, sometimes we have to make decisions that are for the best outcome for the most vulnerable. And it may not be a majority-supported vote. I'm thinking of something a little less, um, that incited a little less maybe angst, but years ago, and it may be only Carol and I that remember this, because I don't know that anybody else was on council at the time. There was an effort to put a sidewalk in on Northrop. There were children that were going to the bus in the morning, there were moms walking with their kids to get to their buses for work that lived in the neighborhood near Northrop, that had to get onto Northrop to get a bus. That there was no sidewalk for them to catch the bus, and they had to stand in the road. Um, and it was dangerous. And the majority of people who lived on Northrop at the time told us they didn't want a sidewalk. They didn't want those people walking in their yards, they didn't wanna have to deal with shoveling the snow, they didn't wanna have to do. My point is, the majority in that case all told us ev- most of the people that lived on Northrop did not want a sidewalk, but the right thing to do was to put in a sidewalk, because it was about the health and safety of the people who needed to use that road the most and needed public transportation and school buses, and we voted to put in that sidewalk. And I know that it doesn't compare in any way, except to say that, you know, maybe a kid gets hit by a bus and killed, and then you can make the argument that you need the sidewalk in a life and death situation. But for many people who are advocating for us to look at a way of reimagining safety, they're thinking about their family, their children, their young boys, who are dealing with life and death safety issues when they, um, when they, when they deal with police. And so that is, it's just a different perspective I'm putting out there. I understand, there there may be a majority. There may be a majority that is 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 writing in, I haven't seen it, not the letters I'm getting. Um, but if anybody out there is getting a majority of people saying that they don't want us to look at this, I'm asking you to think about the most vulnerable that we serve, and think about that sidewalk scenario, because we did the right thing then, and we put in that sidewalk. And I'm hoping that folks will take the vote tonight, let us move forward with the subcommittee. I think we're getting tied up in semantics, and I get it. I get it. I mean, we're we're talking about words that we have differing meanings for. Um, but this doesn't, this this resolution doesn't say we're cutting the budget of police right now. It says that we're going to look at it, um, and find a way to reimagine, and so I just, I hope that we can move forward and do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza, did you wanna speak?
Well, I I lowered my hand, but I, yeah, I might as well, because I remember that Northrop, and I remember the, I live two houses off Northrop, and a lot of people were upset, I mean, I almost said swear word, they were upset because they lost a lot of their property in that situation. So, and I understand, there's a lot of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, and it's dangerous for kids, I get that. You know, I also remember an out-of-town contractor working on there and washing all the cement off their trucks in my driveway and leaving the holes on it. Not one person from the city would would address the situation, so I think you were getting in the weeds a little bit on that one, but uh, I remember that as well.
Okay, so uh, the motion before us, Pat, Patricia, are you raising your hand?
No, just that I I I I do apologize, Councilmember Bets. I I I lost my temper, and I apologize. This is, this is a very, so I I want to continue to work with you, and I wanna continue to work with everybody, so I wanna lower, you know, I wanna lower the temperature and just just say I apologize.
Pat, jovial debate.
Thank you. And if if I had a gavel, I would have used it, but I don't have one, so I appreciate you two sorting that out. So the motion before us is, has been submitted by Councilmember Spitzley to re-refer this to the committee. Um, I don't see any more discussion, so I'm going to call a roll on this, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, um.
Point of, point of order, if I could.
Sure.
Um, I, I I guess I'm not understanding the process. The the motion was made.
And the, and Councilmember Spitzley made the motion and then withdrew her motion and remade the motion to refer to, to re-refer to committee.
But do we need to bother with that? If pulling the motion, we would just take it back to committee anyway?
We don't have to, but there was discussion afterwards, so I wanted to make sure that we, if, Patricia, Councilmember Spitzley, if you'd just like to pull it per Rule twenty-eight, you can pull it and send it back to your committee. Is that what you'd like to do?
After all of the discussion, if no one wants to vote for it, then I will, I will make the decision to pull it back, yes.
All right, so.
So it's pulled back.
Item C one A has been removed from the agenda for this evening's consideration. Um.
Okay, then we are to uh, the Committee on Ways and Means for Donation Acceptance.
Councilmember Wood, you have about ten items to discuss. I'd appreciate the most sincerest brevity on these issues.
I I will try, thank you, sir. Um, the first resolution that we have before us, let me grab it here, is, oh, I gotta have these all in order, where is? Here it is. Uh, the first resolution that we have before us is a donation from, um, uh, Ron Seka, who, uh, Ron Seka is, was a detective within the Lansing Police Department who um, served um, and retired from Lansing Police Department. Um, he uh, was diagnosed um, with cancer and lost his uh, battle on March fifth, twenty twenty. At that time, um, his family held a golf outing, um, and the proceeds from the golf outing, which uh, equate to six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, the family asked be donated, and he served as part of the start team from nineteen ninety-six through um, twenty-ten. And they'd like those uh, proceeds donated to uh, the LPD start team. So with that, I would move uh, that resolution.
All right, there's a proper motion before us. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The next resolution that we have before us um, has to do with a grant acceptance in the Ingham County Parks and Trail um, millage. Um, this would be uh, uh, working on nine projects on the River Trail system. Um, this money comes from um, the millage um, that is collected um, from the um, Ingham County as part of the parks um, and trail system. Uh, the county has already approved this um, donation um, to the city. It would be one million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and um, sixteen cents. And um, of that, um, uh, those dollars, um, there is um, bridges that connect the River Trail that are going to be um, improved on that as well as a um, section of the River Trail uh, that would be a new uh, route that is Saginaw to Oakland, which would be an extension that's sort of in a no man's land um, at this time. So with that, I would move the acceptance of the dollars from Ingham County.
The motion is properly before us. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yeah.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
We seem to have lost her. Uh, hold on just a second.
Council.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm here, I was coughing, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The next resolution before us is a grant acceptance for Stop Violence Against Women um, grant. Uh, this grant is um, for one hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, there is a match of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six uh, dollars. Um, this would be the second year. Um, for this, we received a partial grant um, last year. Um, this is to fund um, a um, detective um, dedicated to investigating crimes against domestic violence um, and stalking. And um, the the question was asked whether the grant was specifically for um, personnel, and it's our understanding that it um, was specifically for police um, personnel with that. So with that, I would uh, move this um, grant acceptance.
Thank you, that's a proper motion. I have a question, uh, Madam Chair, if I may. Um, in committee, we moved it forward with the understanding that um, LPD would present- In committee, we moved it forward with the understanding that, um, LPD would present with us, uh, present to us data on the efficacy of this program, perhaps cases closed and things like that. This discussion from this body was that we were not entirely convinced this was the best way to be spending these money. So did they, did they produce that material for you?
Not for the stop because it was a partial year, so they did not have the data compiled. Um, they do for the auto theft one, which is coming up. Um, and again, it's my understanding that it can only be utilized for police personnel.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Oh.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Oh.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAAS, the resolution is adopted.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. The next grant that we have before us from Michigan State Auto Theft Prevention, um, Grant. Uh, this grant is for $168,093. Uh, and the match is $67,237. Uh, this is a grant that we've had, um, previously. Uh, this would, um, grant would help assist in the prevention of motor vehicle theft. It allows for the use of personnel costs for one police officer dedicated to the auto theft prevention program. Um, vehicle leasing purchases, office supplies, investigative supplies, and, um, specific membership dues. They did provide the information on this. Um, there were the recovery of 312 vehicles, um, from last year, which equated to the savings in the value of the vehicles of $3,133,178. Um, in the recovery of stolen vehicles. So with that, I would, um, move this grant.
Okay. Am I muted? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Um, so what aspect of prevention do they do with this grant? Because what I just heard is that they recover vehicles, but it's a prevention grant. So what, how does this grant, how does giving another officer car to go out, how does that prevent auto theft?
They do a, a number of programs out in the public, um, education wise, uh, dealing with prevention for, um, auto thefts. Um, it also helps in the, you know, most of the time, um, when you're looking at auto thefts, it's, it's not just one car. It's usually a ring of cars. You'll find that people are, um, are, um, uh, committing thefts, um, for a number of vehicles in a, in a community. And so helping to catch those that are involved in the auto theft, um, reduces, um, auto crimes. So it's prevention programs that they utilize these for as well as, um, again, the, um, um, recovery of the vehicles.
Councilmember Dunbar, are you upset? Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So when I look at these grants, um, I am inclined to accept money, even if it goes towards the police department at this time, because I think by getting money, that's not from the city, even though there is a match here. So it's kind of tricky now. But by getting money, it makes it easier to, um, I don't know, use some of the money that the city would normally have for other things. So I'm not going to turn down money just because it goes to the police department. In this case, I'm undecided because I don't know, there's a match and it's, it's a car prevention instead of stop the violence and all these different things. So not going to turn down free money even for the police.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
I, I think, you know, I, I'm, I'm going to also, um, vote yes, but these are the type of grants and it's not just in police. It's, it's across the board that we really need to, we really need to look at what is our intent and what's our mission and what's our goal. Uh, you know, I, I get, um, you know, the purpose of it. Councilmember Wood is always does a great job of explaining the grants and explaining what they're for. Um, but, um, I, you know, I, I struggle with, I, I think at one point, um, and I thought it was Councilmember Dunbar. We were going through, um, Ways and Means last year that we were trying to talk about, um, getting a little bit more information of, of, of why these grants were coming, what were they for? How did they, you know, interact with, you know, our, our goals and missions? So I, I'm going to approve it, but I, I think one of the things and maybe it's, you know, hopefully in Ways and Means next year or even in committee of the whole, we look at, you know, grant acceptance as a whole and it, you know, how we're, which grants we're accepting and, and what are they for and just a whole bunch of things. And so, but I will, I am going to approve this. Thank you.
One thing, uh, Councilmember Spitzley, to your point that we've done is if they're new grants that the administration is applying for, they have agreed to send them on to us, not for approval, but we do place them on file. These are a series of grants that are just renewals that we'd been selected, um, in the beginning. So.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, I think there's a motion. Yes, there's a motion before us. Um, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
IBAs, the resolution is adopted.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure that the, that the grant is accepted. Um, it's a six.
Oh, oh, yes.
And so this, this has failed and, um, uh, these are, um, recapture, um, uh, grants, so, um, they have not billed yet for these grants. So what it means is that these dollars will, um, for this grant to continue will have to come out of the police budget, um, if they continue to give this service.
Okay. Um, moving on to the next one then.
All right.
Councilmember Spitzley, before I move on to Councilmember Wood.
So we, so there's no move. I'm trying to figure out the process. There's no move for reconsideration.
You can move to reconsider, yes, and then we'll hold it over if you'd like.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's, I mean, there's three votes. I don't know if there's any use in doing that.
Okay, let's move on then. Uh, Councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you. The next grant that we have for us is Victims of Crime, um, Act Violence Assistant Grant. Uh, this is used in our CARE program. Uh, this grant is for, um, uh, $206,121. Uh, the majority of this grant is used toward, um, personnel. Uh, there is a match of $41,224, but that is in kind, um, match for volunteers. We have 30 volunteers that work on this program. Uh, this grant, uh, provides, um, local services to, uh, victims um, that are, um, of intimate, um, partner violence. The grant uh, fund helps staff, three, um, staff people, their training and their travel. The staff provide, um, a listening, um, to the victims, assessing and victims' risk at further injury of homicide, provides education and power and control behavior, um, of assaults, personal safety planning and helps to arrange safe shelter, provides advocacy and legal and, uh, civil court proceedings, assists with victim rights. Um, medical forms, um, provides available free 911, uh, phones, arrange transportation to local, uh, community agencies, um, and accesses other, uh, community resources available to victims. Um, and dispenses emergency, uh, person, uh, personal needs items. So, uh, with that, I would move, uh, this grant.
There is, Councilmember Betts.
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor. I just want to say I'm particularly supportive of this grant. This is an example of something that if we were to defund the police, that we could put more money into specifically helping victims and making sure that people are in control and helping them and taking care of them in a way that we should be doing. So, uh, just wanted to say that I'm supportive of this grant. I'm excited to vote yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember, anybody else? Okay, uh, next I cross that, um, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAAS, the resolution is adopted.
The next grant that we have before us has to do with sobriety court grant. Uh, this grant, um, is from the state. It's for $34,999.27. This helps pay for temporary help, uh, fringe benefits, um, contractual services, um, supplies and training. Um, since sobriety court has been, um, uh, instituted since 2005, we've had 203 clients, 187 of those, um, have been discharged of the 187, 122 have not uh, reoffended. Um, currently we have 14, even with COVID, that are actively, um, uh, working this program. Um, there is actually, uh, three, possibly four additional ones that will be added. We asked the question of the recidive rate, um, and, uh, from 2018, uh, the time, uh, the recidivism, recidivism rate was only 6.8%. So with that, I would move this grant.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Shut up!
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Yay.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAAS, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The next grant that we have before us is the 2020 Lead Hazard, um, Grant. Uh, this grant is through HUD. Um, this grant is, uh, for $4,589,040. Um, we have 42 months period, um, to utilize this grant. Um, there is a match and the match is $716,490, which, um, is meant through a community development block grant, um, dollars. Um, this will, um, help, uh, with remediation of 189 housing units. Um, it will also do public outreach and education regarding, uh, lead hazard, uh, training and remediation. Um, it also will work with, uh, 50 landlords on, um, uh, lead abatement, um, supervisory training and cert, and there will be certificates for 50 contractors and workers, um, through this grant. So with that, I would, uh, move the lead hazard grant.
Thank you. There's a proper motion before us. Um, with the, seeing no further discussion, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAAS, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The next grant that we have before us is from the, um, the acceptance from the Michigan Department of Treasury, um, Public Safety and Public Health Payroll Reimbursement. This grant is a total of, um, 22, second, uh, 22,507,341.63 uh, would go to, um, Public Safety, which could be, um, Fire and Police, uh, to help with their, um, payroll. Um, the balance of this is $13,612,483.23. That would go to the Board of Water and Light. Um, and, um, there is, um, a, let's see. Um, the payroll and, and the way it's, uh, the reason it's divided that way is because of the, um, uh, work that the board, um, did as a public utility during the COVID. So with that, I would, um, move, um, the acceptance of these dollars.
Thank you. And I think before I move on, I think it's important to note too, that that's the, that those are the maximums that we, we might receive. Is that correct? Yeah, it still hasn't been totally allocated from treasury yet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the dollars that are going to the Board of Water and Light, are they going to be used to, um, help people keep their utilities on? Is that the purpose of those dollars?
These are payroll dollars. These, these are ones that people working during COVID, during the period of the, the COVID.
And Councilmember Spitzley, I think the answer, I, I think we got this answer a little bit in committee too, that was if revenue is down because turn off notices aren't and pay, payments aren't being made, they're going to have to cut employees. So this helps balance the revenue. So the bad debt's not as bad. That was why a public utility was eligible for those dollars. Does that make sense? Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, uh, I would ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAAS, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And the last one that we have before us, uh, this evening, um, is the, um, uh, COVID, um, Relief Local Government Grant. Um, on July On July 31st, 2020, the state of Michigan reduced and did not make their third payment, their final payment of revenue sharing, which was $904,305. After receiving federal dollars toward COVID, they gave us And so this is to offset the payment that we didn't receive plus a few additional dollars dealing with COVID expenses that affected public safety and public health. So I would move the acceptance of this grant.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No, very good. Seeing none, Mr. Clark, please call the roll on the grant.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted and we are to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So this pertains, pertains, sorry, to the addition of Sandra Brown and Thompson Heine as well as Warner Norcross and Judd to our outside legal counsel list. We discussed this in committee of the whole. This, it was told us that this stems from a quest from the Board of Water and Light. In return, the city attorney is recommending the appointment. Again, I'll say the names of Sandra Brown and the Thompson Heine Law Firm. Sorry, these are attorneys out of Washington DC as outside legal counsel for the purpose of assisting and representing Board of Water and Light with railroad contract issues, which are tied to the termination of the board's coal delivery contract due to the closure of the board's coal plant, sorry. The board also requested the addition of a Michigan law firm, which is Warner Norcross and Judd, to the approved counsel list. And again, our city attorney's office is recommending city council approval. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Our motion is before us. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AAs, the resolution is adopted.
Next item, Councilmember Spitzley is the resolution establishing a commercial rehabilitation district for 329 to 337 South Washington Square for Washington Square at Kalamazoo LLC.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the public hearing on this issue today. And because of timed constraints, we are doing action as well. This is for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district for the address of 329 to 337 South Washington Square. We heard testimony from the owner regarding the establishment of the district for total estimated cost of repairs of $273,125, which includes HVAC replacement, efficiency upgrades, roof repair, shoring up the foundation. The current time schedule, construction will take 10 months to complete. It's for a 10-year financing for 10 years. See. With that, I will move the motion to establish the commercial rehabilitation district.
Thank you. There's a proper motion before us. I do see Councilmember Jackson has his hand up. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I know it's getting late, but I just don't know how I'm going to vote on this. And I guess my thing is, is there any problem with it being called the commercial, but yet still benefiting the residential? Because I just looked up there and apparently they have occupied, you know, tenancies there. So is there any problem with it being someone owns landlord tenant relationship?
Councilmember Jackson, we had the owner have testimony earlier today and he did mention that there were occupied apartments upstairs. Councilmember Betts expressed some concern about that. I did ask specifically during that testimony earlier, was there a way to separate out the establishment of the district and the needed repairs from the apartments, from the living spaces? He said that it would be difficult to do. I think that Councilmember Betts then asked to bring it back and take out those specific areas and costs that specifically related to the apartments, namely the new paint, granite countertops and some other things. And that did not, we continued with the motion as is to create the rehabilitation district. So yes, there are apartments up there. We asked the owner about that. Councilmember Betts in committee and here on the floor expressed his concern. And I do think you voted no for the establishment of the district based on that. So that has been discussed. It was discussed today. I mean, it was also discussed in committee.
Before I call on you, Councilmember Betts, is there anybody out from like the planning department or the city that can mention, that can speak to? I hear what Councilmember Jackson is saying, but is apartment technically, isn't apartment like that a commercial enterprise?
Peter, if I may.
Yeah, Councilmember Betts.
I believe that it's because it's zoned as commercial. If I'm not mistaken, that technically, oh, Chris is here, so I'll let, I'll let him.
I'll let Chris go and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Betts. Thank you. Council, council, no, you don't want that. Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Council. So yes, the, the commercial rehab includes both the normal commercial spaces in which you'd see retail and office, but also the commercial residential spaces that include apartments. So that's all included under the statute and allowed under this act. And the improvements would be both to the commercial spaces as well as those commercial residential units.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klein. Mr. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spadafor. I wanted to add an addendum to what Pat said. I think that I'm comfortable establishing this district and I'm comfortable with most of the repairs. I think that we just need to revisit the certificate before we push this thing forward. And I think that's something that we should vote, I think that a lot of us are going to be making that decision tonight. And I think that establish the district is one thing. Then offering a certificate with these improvements to the apartments is something that we should be asking on councils. That's a separate question. And that's the reason there's two votes here. So thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
My question would be to Mr. Klein. I, I know we've had these issues before where we've created districts and then had to approve this, a certificate. And I'm not saying commercial, I'm just using, you know, whether we're talking enterprise and, or whatever. But the, what we've been told is essentially, once you've created the district, you're almost obligated to approve the certificate. So I want to have clarification on that.
So the, the certificate establishes the areas in which, yeah, the district established the areas in which certificates can be applied for. And I, I do know that the applicant, Mr. Doug Merrick and Jim Tischler are also in the audience, they're able to speak on this. But the, there's really no value with just the district. And in this case, because of the, some of the delays due to council meetings being shifted around, really at the end of the line in order to get this approved by the end of the year. And it would require both establishing the district and approving the certificate for that, that to be approved. It still has to go to the state. Yeah, it, as far as obligating, there's really no purpose. We usually ride them together as far as the district and the certificate, because there's, for the same legal description. I don't believe we have any examples of large districts besides NEZs in which it opens up a wide area for them people to apply. Usually it's for a specific parcel or set of parcels. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. Jim, I guess my question would be to you. I know that council approved a redevelopment for the city, the city market project, which was the Gillespie Project. And then we turned down the brownfield. And in court, we were told that since we had approved the development agreement, in essence, we were approving. That was our mindset. That was what the judge had said was our mindset. And we weren't, they determined that, that they read our minds and that we needed to approve this. So I, I just want to understand, if you vote for one, what is the legal ramifications on the other?
Well, I'm familiar with the LDFAs and Tifa districts and all that. And usually you create a larger district and then you can approve projects within those districts that they don't go hand in glove. I don't believe anything in this statute. I mean, it's just more functional to do it this way, Chris, correct? Why would you set up the district and not do the certificate? Is that?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
There's no obligation unless there's some contract out there like you're referring to on the brownfield case.
It's also my understanding that Mr. Tischler may have something to add to this conversation.
Okay.
Evening, Honorable Members of Council. I'm Jim Tischler. I am helping Mr. Merrick with this application. The question generally has to do with districts under the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. This act operates very similar to the Neighbor Enterprise Zone Act, NEZ, excuse me, where, where a district can be a single parcel or multiple parcels or an area that is the decision of the council in establishing. Lansing, to my understanding, has had some history with NEZs where they've established larger sections of downtown and other parts of the city. To my knowledge, under the other, under other tax exemption acts, the focus has been that the district is the specific parcel. And so in approaching the administration and leap on this, the recommendation that was made here was to propose the district to be the parcel itself. It'd be my personal opinion that the city might want to consider a larger area-wide approach in a district if they wanted to encourage investment in that area, wherever that area may be.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Jim?
I guess I just want to reaffirm from Mr. Tischler who respect after a few years back. There's no, it's not tied. You know, functionally, they're creating the district and then the certificate, but you could create an whole area in most of the statutes and then projects within that area. So they're not intimately tied. That's the way they're doing it now.
That, correct. I, that's correct. They do not have to be tie barred together to the parcel. A district can be more than one parcel of which multiple projects or under certificates could be approved into the future where that decision to be made.
Councilmember Wood.
When you're limiting it and narrowing it to a parcel now, or three parcels, the way this is put together, then aren't you then in essence, when you're passing this, affirming the fact that this needs to move forward with the certificate? It's a, it's a lot different when you're talking about a larger geographic area than what you are when you're defining it with just the three parcels.
In my very limited understanding of this project this was put before us is because of the timeline on the district hasn't been created and the certificate hasn't also been authorized. So they're doing a very narrow district and a certificate. Had we done this six months ago, we might be having this upper conversation. But that's kind of what I've been basically, my very brief understanding in talking to the chair about why we're moving forward quickly is there's a timeline to get this to the state to get it approved. And if we don't do that, then it doesn't get approved. That's why we're doing them close together. You don't have to do them together. And in an ideal world, is what I heard Mr. Tischler say, we would have done a broader commercial rehabilitation district downtown in which several parcels could apply for certificates, but we didn't do that this time. So I think, Councilmember Wood, to your point, it's probably perfunctory to approve them separately because of the way it's being done this time. But it's not always that way, is what I'm understanding. Is that, is that an accurate summation, Mr. Tischler?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I thought I saw that hand, but it's gone now. So I'm just gonna ask that we, oh, Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, I thought I saw Councilmember Betts's hand up as well. In any event, I guess I have a quick question. I understand the timeline piece and the urgency here in terms of getting the certificate done, making sure that these get to the state and get approved. With regards to some of Councilmember Betts's concerns that he raised in committee of the whole with regards to some of the investments that are slated to be made. If those were backed out, Chris will say in a perfect world, we had more time. If those were backed out from the certificate application, how does that change at all? The cert that we'd be taking a look at, the time, I mean, this is a tax freeze, right? So how would that change? I don't think it would change. I think they could still go forward with a 10, a 10-year. I think they could still get, you know, their, their property in terms of taxable value, sorry, frozen to, to pre-investment levels. But again, if you could, if you could talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. That's a good point. It does abate taxes and so it'd just be any, any changes in real property value. So it'd be dependent on any regular inflationary kind of changes to value, but then also the value of those improvements, which regardless of, if they're in, within the application or a development agreement or not, if they're performing that property within the time of the certificate within the window of time that they're asking for, yeah, they, they would still be able to, to have that entire benefit on that property. Now, I, I do think it's important, amount of work that they're doing on the building and to have that together and they have pledged within the UDA in their application to do that amount of work. So it's a considerable amount on both foundations and within the interior of the building as well. So in short, yes, it would be pretty much together. You wouldn't be able to separate those out.
And I appreciate that. I still, I still have concerns. Mr. Tischler himself said this is essentially, I don't want to say it's analogous to an NEZ. And so what we would be looking at is one property downtown, 2007 to 2019, that had the NAZ tax benefit. Now what we're looking to do is come back in 2020, look at another 10-year tax benefit. I understand we have different owners here, but I also understand that Merrick and his team, you know, purchased this with the understanding that they had an NEZ that was expiring tax benefit, that it might not be palatable for a city council to continue to provide or extend tax benefits to, you know, a property downtown where it looks like maybe the money is not being, or hasn't historically been reinvested to make sure that this property is not deteriorating. I'm getting a little bit tired, to be quite frank, of approving not only Kickstarter tax incentives for downtown, but then being asked to approve re-ups essentially, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years in. At some point, and you know, I've said this and I've said this, you know, for the last five years, I'd like some of these tools to be leveraged outside of the downtown area. And when we continuously deploy these downtown, it makes it even less palatable to take a look at some of our really, I mean, truly distressed parts of our community that could use this. When we talk about establishing a, a large district, Mr. Tischler, and then trying to encourage, you know, individuals within that district to reinvest into those, into those, you know, those properties. You know, I think that has merit outside of the downtown as well. So I, I struggle with this. I don't think I'm going to be supporting this. And I just, I just wanted to make the reasons clear and in part of the public record.
Okay, I'm going to call the question here and those, Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
No for now.
Councilmember Spadafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Two yeas, six nays, the resolution is not adopted.
We will skip the next one. Ordinance says for introduction, Miss Councilmember Spitzley.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have, hold on, you short circuited me there. All right, the Committee on Development and.
Point of order, Mr. President. I'm sorry. So I get what we just did and I don't have a problem. We can just skip over the certificate. Don't we have to pull it or act on it or we just pretend like it doesn't exist? I think we don't.
Well, I'm pulling, I mean, as the presiding officer, I pulled it from the agenda.
Okay.
There's really no reason to vote on something that is functionally.
No, no, I get that.
The first one, so I've pulled it from the agenda.
Okay, I get that. I was just, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Sorry, Chris.
All right, okay. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance and map being Part 12 Title VI of the Lansing Codified Ordinances in its entirety, except for Chapter 1300 Marijuana Operations, with a Form-Based Code and zoning map. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley, anything to add to this? You're muted, Patricia.
Sorry, I mean, it's, you know, it's only whatever clock it is. Is that? I don't know which one that was.
We're on Form-Based Code.
Okay, because I heard marijuana in there too. So it got me all confused. No, I don't have anything to add. We had a presentation by the Brian McGrane and the planning for the Form-Based Coding, and they are going to be here on November 30th to give a more detailed presentation to council in advance of the public hearing that we're gonna have.
Very good, Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to mention why there was that piece on marijuana. It's because it's explained to us in committee that this would not impact the zoning language within Chapter 1300 that deals with marijuana in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein, that's helpful. Do I have to vote on this, Council, Mr. Clerk?
So in the public hearing, yes.
Okay, and the public hearing would be when? I'm sorry, I missed that.
November 30th.
November 30th, okay, 21 days from today, very good. Which incidentally is our next council meeting. So there's a motion before us, Councilmember Spitzley, correct? Yes, okay, all those in favor?
Correct.
Heading the public hearing? Resolution?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays. The public hearing is set and we are to the next introduction. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 1300, Section 1300.11 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to allow marijuana micro businesses to operate in a F and F1 commercial zoning district. The ordinance was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development.
Very good, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the purpose of this ordinance is to expand, amending the Chapter 1300 for medical marijuana micro businesses, allowing them to operate in F and F1 commercial zoning districts. It's my understanding that we have, you know, conditionally approved micro businesses who are having trouble with locations. And so this would expand the zones that they are allowed to be located in. I have a point, I have a question on this. It's my understanding this has not gone before the planning board yet. And so are we putting the cart before the horse here by, you know, setting a public hearing and doing everything and it has not gone before the planning board?
That's a great question, and I think that you're correct. I know that question was asked of folks a few weeks back and we just got an answer last week. So if the cart was put before the horse, it may have been my fault, but only because I didn't have all the information.
That's fine, I'm just so, my, and that, you know, it is what it is. The question is, do we continue doing the public hearing before we have a decision by the planning board?
Councilmember Wood, I'll let you speak, Councilmember Wood.
You have to have, the committee has to have a recommendation from the planning board before you can move this forward. So you're gonna have to pull it and wait until you get that recommendation and then you can bring it back.
That's my understanding, the planning board meets on November 17th, so we can consider this on the 30th.
We would have to move the public hearing, so we can't set the public hearing on the 30th, or can we?
We'd have to set it on the 30th for sometime in December.
Correct, okay. Well, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, just very quickly, this might be a question for the administration. Just as we prepare to take a look at this at the next meeting, or I'm sorry, whatever it is, November 30th meeting. In committee, and maybe I missed something in committee, what I thought I heard was that there were three pending, or not pending, sorry, conditionally approved licenses, one for each ward, other than the second ward. And in the second ward, I believe that there was a pending application. We asked the city attorney's office what the reason for this request was. We understood it came from your office, Mayor Shor, because we were a little bit confused. We almost felt like it was after hearing from the city attorney's office that was almost a solution in search of a problem. In that, at least our understanding, you know, being that you can't have more than one micro business in any one ward of the city, that these locations, I shouldn't say these locations, but these applicants had actually found locations within H and I, which is heavy and light industrial, and that the reason that their applications were, you know, pending or conditionally approved respectively, had nothing to do with the zoning in this ordinance. And maybe we got bad information, but I know that that was one of the things that caused a little bit of of heartburn for some of the committee members. We just didn't understand why this was necessary. So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm gonna let the mayor speak. I know, so they'd approached me that apparently that there were some issues. So I had agreed to introduce it as a council member and that there were some areas where the micro businesses were zoned right out of possibility in the wards, or at least that there wasn't an option for them to exist. So I had introduced it with that understanding. So mea culpa if that's not the case, but I'll ask the mayor to respond.
Yeah, well, this didn't come from me, but I did, my understanding was that there are four, there are four available micros. What I was told was that two, two were approved because the two of the wards, there are industrial areas and there were not industrial areas in the other two wards. That's what I was told, but I have not independently confirmed that. So we can, I can ask the clerk or we can look up and see who's applied. But my understanding was that in two of the wards, there were not industrial areas. So the reasoning was they wanted to open it up to commercial areas to be in those two wards in order to, to hit the mark on what was originally supposed to be one in each ward. And that's the information I was given, but we can ask the clerk or we can find out who is alive for micros and who wasn't.
It would be my recommendation then, Councilmember Spitzley, that we just pull this back until we figure out what's needed.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, it's gotta go before planning anyway, so.
Yeah. Let's let the planning board figure it out and then we'll do the easy work.
Wonder. Yeah.
We just fully staffed that, so we're good. Mr. Clerk, I do not want to step on your toes one more time, so I'm just gonna sit here and smile until you tell me what's.
Okay. We are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative, on city government-related matters. So please start raising your hand if you want to speak at the end of the meeting where you will get up to three minutes. And in the meantime, we are to report to city officers, boards and commissions.
All right, Mr. Vice President, we'll need a motion, please.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered as read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you president.
Sounds good to me. What does the, what does the council think, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the referrals are authorized. We have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Liquor license transfer ownership of Sidecar LLC.
General services.
City council schedule for calendar year 21.
City council and Cal, that's one, which will have a special meeting.
Executive Order 2020-06, the building closures.
Place on file.
Letters from the mayor. We have Z42020 rezoned 220 North Pennsylvania.
Development plan.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance to expand the West Saginaw Street overlay.
Development plan.
Payment in lieu of taxes, Walter French apartments.
Development plan.
Grand Acceptance City for Financial Empowerment Fund.
Ways.
SLU 22020, 900 Southlands Church in F Commercial.
Development plan.
Z62020, 24 and 2500 block of North Grand River, rezoned to H Light Industrial.
Development plan.
Act 42020 Vacation of Rose Court.
Development plan.
Z52020, rezone Miller and Orchard, Miller Road and Orchard Court to DM3 Residential.
Development and planning.
Fee change bike locker fees.
Ways and means.
Notification of the City of Lansing bond sale results.
Committee of the whole.
HUD Audit Penalty Communication.
Committee of the whole.
Reappointment of Jonathan Lum to the Michigan Avenue Quarter Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Communications and petitions, letters in support of invest in the people of Lansing resolution.
Place on file.
Communication from the Liquor Control Commission about 101 South Washington Square.
General services.
Affidavit of Disclosure Angie Kwawi Information Technology.
Ethics Board.
Claim appeal for Bank Johnson, 1122 Platt Street.
General Services.
We are to remarks by councilmembers.
Other remarks by councilmembers, I just, before we open up, I forgot to mention something at the beginning of the meeting, although it's much later now. Just a reminder that we do not meet again before the annual Silver Bells in the City celebration. That is on November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This year will be broadcast on Fox 47 and you can also find more information at silverbellshomeedition.org. So we're still doing a tree lighting. It just will be a much more virtual experience this year. That's all I have to say. Other councilmembers? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
We're to the mayor's comments.
Mayor, no, no comments from the mayor.
Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. You have up to three minutes. After the first speaker is finished, we will stop adding to the list. And the first speaker is Bill Highland, followed by Marshall Clavow.
Yeah, my name is Bill Highland. I worked for the city of Lansing, 31 years. Retired on the incentive program. Retiree healthcare was one of the incentives that I retired under. I can't imagine having taken away now. I implore the mayor to reconsider this action and find a way to balance this budget. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Clavow, followed by Propagandie.
Thank you, council, for the time this evening. Well, it's getting late, but I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak. I felt my silence was betrayal, so that's why I'm still on this call two hours later. I would really like to spend my time uplifting the voices and efforts of councilmembers Jackson, Dunbar and Betts in support of the revolution that's so under delayed, especially the most important message, that this resolution is seeking alternatives in public safety for the most underserved and those not engaged in the political process. That cannot be denied, that cannot be forgotten, must be at the forefront of our reflection as we make these hard decisions. The 5-3 divide of this body of government baffles me and it frustrates me. Going to directly to the point of Councilmember Spitzley, government not working and/or not working and perhaps how that works. That, that, that kind of confuses me. I understand the heat of the moment, but I'm caught off guard by those words compared to your actions, Councilman, Councilmember Spitzley. The resolution was supported by you in the subcommittee. This is after months of dialogue amongst yourselves, your peers, the council members, the public comment, and even compromise within that subcommittee. To me, that's, that's your government being led, that's a failure. So I don't, you know, I'm questioning if any of this body knows how government works. That's really disappointing to see. Nextly, preserving the subcommittee feels very important to me. Instead of pointing it to the DEI committee to ensure public transparency, people in support of this resolution, quite frankly, don't trust the mayor's judgment on this issue. Furthermore, his appointments of the committee. From my point of view, the public eye, six of 14 members have resigned as of 20, the 25th of September. That's not very long ago. I'm not sure who's still on the committee. I think a subcommittee would ensure the transparency of the community's trust. That's important. Now to move to LPD specifically, and really the overlying funding issue that's striking our state, the pension liability funding, this is where creativity is needed. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results. We have to look at this issue of pension liability funding in a different, a different lens. Perhaps, and in my opinion, the largely worried majority of white constituents that are worried about this, you know, the trigger word defunding, perhaps maybe they, they create some sort of funding for this avenue using past drug and property fortune assets gained over the years by the police department. How about that money goes towards liability total? And lastly, to highlight Councilmember Wood's point, what are we gonna do for all these healthcare issues? And, you know, we hear the voices and I hear the concern of people whose healthcare has been stripped by the recent actions. And this is Medicare for All. I mean, this is the solution that is potentially life-changing in so many, so many assets. I mean, we see Medicare for All, all the way to diversity and inclusion for police liability. So just connecting those dots and thinking outside the box is really important as we move forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And have a good evening.
Thank you, and we are done accepting additional speakers. Next, we have Propagandie, followed by Loretta Stanley.
Hello, here again. I think it's important that I, that I boost the signal of Anthony Hulan in the city lockup. For about eight months now, I've been on these council hearings requesting that they, demanding that they shut that jail down. And the whole time that I was saying that, I was saying that it needs to be shut down because it's such a liability because we know the LPD kills people in there. And I can remember every time I said that, watching, and I kind of heard this little squeak come out of Mayor Shor's window when his asshole tightened up, when he heard me say something he believed I probably knew. And how could I possibly know that they had killed somebody in that jail back in April? And why is it that this city council looked, you know, completely befunk about the fact that somebody was killed in there? Did you all know that this was a murder, this was a homicide in that jail, but you just didn't know about the lawsuit? I want to know these things. And it's so, it's so deafening, like the aspect that nobody talks about this and all the council is just business as usual, so much so that you guys even talked about the silver bells in the city. When the Hulan family is coming up here to knock on Andy Shor's door to get answered. When the Hulan family is coming up here to knock on Andy Shore's door to get answers. And we're talking about, there's so many things, you guys killed and murd- murdered somebody in the jail and hid it from us during the whole entire time that we were dealing with the, uh, George Floyd incident. I'm just blown away at this council, and I'm blown away at this mayor, and blown away at the city attorney. And I'm blown away at all of the people down here who have the rights and have the chance to do something about this. And then we're talking about defunding police and how serious this is and this issue is. And while we're talking about that, nobody stops to think that these people, four gentlemen, inside that jail, killed somebody. The medical examiner expressly stated that it was homicide, the reason this man died. The same way that George Floyd passed, the same way he was murdered. And Andy Shore had enough balls to stand up in an N double A C P rally, take a knee. While you knew your own police force had killed somebody in that, in that jail. And when we're talking about reforms to save black and brown lives, to take police off the streets that may be possibly hurting people, you guys know all the stories. All of the propaganda, man. Why is it that none of you are demanding an answer from this man? Everybody in this council stands up and looks totally confused when he does another wrong thing. We had no power. Well, I'm asking and calling on all of you kind people, who I've had good relationships through the past, for a vote of no confidence against Andy Shore in the next, uh, council meeting. I'm calling on you to take a stand for the people. Because regardless of how we stand on defunding police, how we stand on any of these things, we should all be able to come to the table and understand that this leadership is driving us to a ditch. This new lawsuit, the same, uh, person who is, who is, uh, who is bringing this lawsuit sued back in ninety six and won, it was awarded thirteen million dollars. This is what we're looking at, not to mention all the other lawsuits this man has brought to our city. So for the care of the city and the people of this city, aside from every other difference we have, please, let's get rid of this man. Spatafor, I gladly give you the spot for the next year. Then I'm gonna come for it, but we'll give it to you for that year. Vote of no confidence, please.
Thank you. Next we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Sam Colgrove.
Hello, um, I just wanted to give a little brief history of the origin of police. Um, it goes back beyond biblical times to night watchmen and different cultures and religions and countries, different names in different places, gendarmes, night watchmen, constables, police, whatever you want to call them. Uh, the roles have remained much the same ever since. Uh, they've been empowered by the state to enforce the law, ensure safety and health and possessions of the citizens, prevent crime and preserve civil order. And it has been the same for over two thousand years. It didn't originate in the U S. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sam Colgrove, followed by Mary Hem Street.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you very much for your time. Um, I served twenty five years and twenty nine days on Lansing Fire. Um, part of what I did was work with the union and I was on a couple contract negotiations. And I can tell you also as a union steward and active in my union, there is not a contract that both L L P D and L F D did not give money toward our healthcare retirement. Matter of fact, in the late nineties, we transferred almost four million dollars into our healthcare retiree fund to make sure it was fully funded. We were told by the city healthcare costs would rise by eight percent. They did not always rise by eight percent. Some years down as low as two percent. We have always given money. We've given it from our wage. What that means to us now, as you cut our healthcare, is that that li- lack of wages was multiplied through my entire career. Every year we turned down, sometimes it was a half percent, sometimes one point five or two percent. And leave time and vacation time. All that was turned back, so when I retired, my healthcare would be secure. We don't spend the money. The city makes the budget. We have no control over it. Once we gave that money to you, you are supposed to be good and equitable stewards. Now I can tell you over twenty five years and twenty nine days, and I retired in two thousand and seven, even Carol Wood wasn't there. So this is when you want to talk about that legacy. But remember too, when you talk about legacy costs, you're making an assumption all the bills come due at once, and they won't. But what happens is you keep spending money. If you wish to control legacy costs, you're gonna have to contract the budget. And the budget doesn't contract. You're finding money from our healthcare costs. Uh, in the, in the time of my career, I've got three torn lumbar discs. I've had both my left and right shoulder damaged. I've got a torn neck disc. I've had my right hip replaced because of fall out of fire. I've been the messenger for the skin cancer for all the small burns around my face, and I'm not complaining. I loved my job. I did my service. I would do it again. And that's one of the only reasons you may start to get people in there. Because when we retire, we have to know that all those things that happen to us can be cared for. Cancer's four times the normal risk for a firefighter. You can't listen to the news now and talk about.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Hem Street, followed by Stan Shuck.
Hi, thank you very much for your time and for sticking with us this long this evening. I know you're all tired. I just want to go on the re- record of being totally against Andy Shore's method of balancing the legacy costs, which he said in his, his, uh, campaign speeches that he wouldn't ever do on the backs of the retirees. The stress that this move has caused is untold. And the continued negative effects that it will have on us as retirees is unconscionable. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by Sarah Morrison.
Yeah, I'd like to say, uh, I was a union rep for most of my life and my career with the city of Lansing. By ex-chair of the U A W, union steward, negotiated contracts. I'm not real sure the city's ever negotiated a contract in good faith or has kept the contract that they did supposedly negotiate in good faith. Um, you know, at, at every negotiation, we gave back wages. Uh, you know, vacation, we gave many concessions. Uh, we took ownership and prescription costs. We, you know, we did so many things to help the city. The city would sit across the table, uh, and, and say that we need help. We need help with these legacy costs. We need concessions. Uh, you know, the bargaining units have got to come together. You got to come to the table and help us with these costs. So that's exactly what we did. We, we answered the bell. We came to the city. We gave you concessions. And those concessions, those weren't one-time savings. You're still saving on every one of those concessions today. And will continue to save on those concessions forever. Those are millions and millions of dollars. The sad fact is that you were not good stewards of those dollars. And not one cent of that money ever went towards the liabilities. That's how you got to seven hundred and thirty eight, seven thirty six million doll, almost a billion dollars. Because you never addressed those liabilities. And the sad fact is, this expected savings of eight point two million dollars is openly not going to the liability cost, but going to maintain city services and programs. So once again, we're, you know, even with this, we're, we're not addressing it. We're still kicking the can down the road. And I've got to wonder if all those concessions by all the bargaining units over time, what that math comes to. And I, I would be very surprised if it wasn't well over the liability. Well over the seven hundred and thirty six million dollars in liabilities that the unions have gave to the city to address this. Uh, you know, i- it's time, you, you've got to address it. You've got to put some money towards it. You got to do something. You know, uh, but to keep putting this on the backs of the retirees, like I mentioned earlier, you had one die, you know, two days ago. His wife's in the hospital right now. Uh, you know, January first is, you know, a month away. She's gonna have incurring costs. Uh, you know, that's gonna be almost half of her yearly income. Uh, I got my packet today in the mail, you know, twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars a year out of pocket out of a thirty thousand dollar retirement. Are you kidding me? I'll come back to work tomorrow. That was the deal.
Thank you, Mr. Shuck.
That was the deal.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Morrison, followed by Sheri Wegman.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Um, first, I really want to thank the city council. I know that we've inundated all of you, um, with our letters, with our, um, approach, you know, on all these meetings. Carol, again, from all of us, I, I think you expressed what everybody felt so well. Um, and I'm not saying that all of you haven't expressed things well, but Carol just really summed it up for everybody, I think. Um, the healthcare benefits that we're gonna lose, when you retire and when you make those decisions, you make it when you've paid off your house and you've, you've done your time and you've made your sacrifices. And you make that decision financially that you, what you can afford to do based on your healthcare, what your monthly income, income is gonna be, all of those things. If you don't, if you suddenly have somebody rip the rug out from underneath you, that changes everything completely. Are we supposed to go back to work? My husband can't go back to work. He's disabled. Um, we've, we've done, um, rallies. We've sent letters to you guys. We've done letters to the editor. Um, very pleased when some just very young kids showed up at the last one. And, um, they were from Black Lives Matter and the L B G T Q community. Young kids that said, oh, my gosh, you guys are like our grandparents. This is terrible. Like, I mean, even as young kids, they can see how detrimental it was to people in our age category. We don't have the time to go back up and make up for something. If I was hiring in at twenty and knew that I had to plan for my own healthcare thirty or thirty-five years, forty years down the road when I retired, I, I could do that. But when you plan it and you're already there, you don't, you can't go back and make that up. Where, where are we supposed to get it from? We have to sell our house and move in with our kids? It's not fair to them. Not fair to us either. I, I, I just, you guys have got to find a solution to it. There, there's, there's got to be other ways. The money was given to the city. The money has been spent by the city. I mean, seventeen point two million that I made still, we've asked, you know, from the general fund, where did it go? Nobody's been able to answer that one. There's other ways. There's, it's got to be creative. It's time to be a little creative. Because if you've spent the money, you have to find a way to retrieve the money or make money, invest money. They were able to save the pension fund. What's going on with the healthcare fund? They're separate things. So how do we handle the healthcare fund? So again, thank you guys all. I know it's late. I know that we all have kept up the last couple of meetings because we stick right around till the end. Um, but, but we appreciate it. It's, we need your help. We need your support. And I think that the people in the community, we're gonna keep it right up front and center. I hope you guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Next we have Sheri, Sarah, Sheri Wegman, followed by Pat Went.
Hi, good evening. Um, I want to say thank you, uh, to city council for listening to us. Um, it's been a long evening for you. It's a long evening for people sitting here listening to business that, um, we're not really familiar with. Um, but the fact of the matter is retiree healthcare is an important issue. Um, and it didn't have to be an issue. That's probably one of the saddest things. It didn't have to be an issue. Um, unions weren't brought in to talk to about this. It was just an arbitrary decision. Um, and, you know, is it all on Mayor Shore? I'd, I would like to think that, uh, city council would be more diligent in the future to situations like this. I know it caught the retirees off guard. It caught the city council off guard. There's no transparency in this proceeding until it comes in front of the public, which thankfully, um, it has. But again, it didn't have to be this way. Um, so I'm hopeful that tomorrow, that there can be some type of resolution going forward, that this does not take effect on January first. Um, my husband turned eighty this past August. He's not gonna be going out to look for a second job. And I'd be hopefully, hopeful that we don't have to take drastic measures to fund our healthcare. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Pat Went, followed by Jack Whaley.
Hi, um, just an audio check. Are you getting me okay?
Gotcha.
Okay, this is, uh, not Pat Went, this is Tom Went. I worked for, uh, twenty years in the finance department. First as an accountant and then, uh, as a budget analyst. And, uh, I'd like to just make a point here that many of us have worked for forty five years or more uh, since we started our adult careers before we hit retirement age. And near the end of that forty five years, we probably spent several years working out different scenarios and planning on how we're gonna make our retirement work. Part of that planning was considering what our healthcare coverage would be during retirement. So in all, I would say, you know, we, we probably spent several years, uh, just before retiring, reviewing all of our uh, possible, uh, scenarios so that we would know when to retire. And now, uh, these changes are coming within a matter of months. And, uh, that's on top of a, uh, decision that most of us made over a period of years. So I would just like to request, if changes are to be made, and, and I still sincerely hope that there can be another resolution to this, uh, problem, other than taking it out of the pockets of the retirees. Please give us a considerably longer period to adjust. And, uh, also, uh, perhaps spread the changes over multiple years again, to, uh, help us to adjust to the, uh, the changes. And, uh, I think perhaps, uh, maybe some more time to discuss, uh, the, the funding of the retiree healthcare, uh, might be appropriate in as much as, I, I think several of you recognized tonight that the, the funding of the police department was not something to be done in a hurry, but, uh, should be given careful consideration. So that, uh, I would request that you give careful consideration to, uh, any changes that you end up making, uh, to the retirement healthcare. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Zach Whaley, followed by Edward Osmo.
Thanks for getting my name right the second time, Mr. Swob. Um, so we keep wanting to talk about cops per capita and how Lansing's better than other areas. Um, how does Lansing stack up in terms of cop homicides per capita? Are we better than Holt and like Grand Ledge? Yeah. Um, we want to talk about putting the cart before the horse in terms of defunding the police. Like, I, let's look at this in a completely different way. So let's take like a domestic violence situation. Step one is you remove the cause of harm. You don't sit there and try to submit it to a subcommittee to figure out, well, maybe what's the best plan? Meanwhile, somebody's getting punched in the face. And I challenge you to explore why you're in favor of getting rid of the city jail, councilmember Spitzey, Spitzley. Is it because you understand that it's actively causing harm and you can't remain, it can't remain as part of our city government? The jail's a building. I, I mean, it's not even a building. It's part of a building. The jail didn't kill anybody. The people working inside of the jail killed Anthony Hulan. What are we doing to address the people that are killing people? A bunch of you need to check your privilege. I, cops are a tool of white supremacy and no one sitting in her home office in her leather high back chair is a white woman dripping in nearly as much privilege as I have gets to say that they aren't. And that includes Ms. Stanaway. Are you really trying to posit that we're gonna adapt policies from the Old Testament? Why don't you actually read that thing once and let me know how you think that'll work out? I hope you're a fan of occasional human sacrifice. Councilmember Wood, your fragility is disgusting. Try to see things from somebody else's perspective other than yours. That's whose experience we're talking about right now. When was the last time you were stopped, um, when was the last time you feared for your life when you were stopped during a traffic stop? Let's talk about stats, councilmember Garza. You should at least be able to pass a high school stats class if you're gonna be on this council making policy. The numbers you have, have a ton of problems. What's your sample size comparing single month, year over year numbers? Arson's increased a hundred percent. So is there one last year and there's two this year? Give me a break. That's called noise. Do you understand the difference between correlation and causation? But don't even tell me that you had, didn't hear from anybody in Lansing supporting this resolution when both me and my wife have personally emailed you. And meanwhile, we're cutting retirees' healthcare benefits while paying for cops to yuck it up with fascists at the Capitol for the last three days. while paying for cops to yuck it up with fascists at the Capitol for the last few days? While most of you quibble about optics and how you're going to define, defund, there are people dying. There are people being murdered. And how long did that even take to come out? There are people being traumatized whose stories will never be told and will never hear. That pain caused by police will be theirs to hold alone. And it's like there's a fire and you're sitting there with buckets of water deciding on whether or not there's people inside that are worth it or not. You all voted to declare racism a mental health crisis, not an issue to table, not something to put on a to-do list and not something to fit into your agenda, a crisis. Councilmember Garza, if I called you right now and said one of your kids was in a crisis, what would you do? Would you table it for further discussion? Would you find somewhere to pencil it into your calendar? Would you actively impede an effort to help them? That's what you would be doing by voting against this motion. You were telling people that their crisis is not worth your risk, that you're not, they're not worth the political capital. Councilmember Spitzley, did you vote to declare the lack of access to marijuana a crisis? Let's talk about that sidewalk. Councilmember Garza, councilmember Dunbar's example wasn't at all in the weeds. It's a perfect representation of people deciding between the importance of property and the importance of people's lives. Was that ever a valid comparison?
Thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Thank you. Next is Edward Osmar followed by Amy Rydel.
Hello. My name is Edward Osmar. I'm a retiree of the city of Lansing. I'm 71 years old and I'm worried about what's going on. But tonight, I'm also a little bit upset about what I'm hearing about what's going on in the jail. Now, I started with the city in 78. I was electronics technician for the police department. I'm a civilian. My first year I was there, I was sent into the jail to fix a speaker. When I walked into the back of the jail, I saw an inmate sitting on the floor, hand into a trash bag, shoving plastic forks and pieces of spoon in his mouth, trying to swallow them. I hollered for help and saw four guys run in there, drag that guy down, and another one hold his jaw open while another guy reached in and tried to pull the stuff out of his mouth. That's the kind of guys that are working up there. They're not up there trying to kill anybody. They're trying to keep them safe and alive. I also was, they had an incident where somebody tried to commit suicide. So we had to put audios and television systems in or video into the jail. A couple of years later, they decided that wasn't good enough and they tried to put better system in. I spent 20 years working for the police department and I watched, I don't know how many times I was up in the jail and I saw those guys working. They weren't up there trying to kill anybody. They're trying to keep them safe. And it just angers me to hear people saying that they are murdered in the jail. They may have died in the jail, but there's no way that they were murdered and killed by the individuals that worked there because that's what they feel like doing that day. It's just asinine. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And next, we have Amy Rydel followed by Sue.
Hi, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to sit here and beat a dead horse. You guys have heard me speak before and I obviously am retired from Lansing Police Department. It's late. I just wanted to reiterate a few things for the healthcare and the retirement stuff that's obviously taking place. And to the person who spoke a couple before me, you know, I personally worked in the jail as part of my time at LPD as a court officer. And I don't take offense. I do, but not in a sense that I kind of have to brush certain things off. I'm going to brush this one off because I don't look in them here myself and look at myself as a murderer by any means, okay? So part of our job when we have that facility is to maintain, you know, order in the jail and do arraignments and do certain things. And I will just tell you that I can go to sleep at night myself knowing that the job that is done on a daily basis in the jail is usually a darn good one. So moving on to the healthcare portion, I just want to say thank you again for considering other avenues. Hopefully, we can resolve this, not just shortchange us as of January 1st. We also got our paperwork today in the mail. It's frustrating from my perspective because I am limited on my income. I can't go get a second job because I'm on disability. I look at my costs. It's tripling. I have a son who has certain medications that have to be pre-authorized at least a month in advance. So we're becoming now, we're putting ourselves in a timeframe of, I have two weeks to know what is happening. And I obviously don't feel like that's going to be something that we can overcome. I hope it is. I'm hopeful that we can work together on something and move past this. But just know that, I know, we understand people are frustrated with the police department and the budgets. We all understand that there's a money shortage. We get it. But at the same time, we all have to be open-minded and come together for some solution and just not be a backdoor about it. Be open-minded, have better communication, and work through it together. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sue followed by Amanda Thomashow.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sue Dyer. I spoke before. I'm a widow of a firefighter that was less, he was at two months before he could retire when he came home from a 24-hour shift and had a massive stroke at 37 years old. He was the public information officer for this Lansing Fire Department. So he was always in the forefront, trying to make the city of Lansing look good, even at times when he didn't think, he wanted to really say anything good about them. I, he's been gone 11 years. He always had a yellowy day. We missed holidays with him. He missed a lot of things that my children went through. So even though I didn't fight a fire, I fought behind him to try to protect him and give him a good morale when he'd have to go and fight those fires. And he thought that we would be taken care of with the healthcare for the rest of our life. Here I am, all by myself, and he's not able to help me. But he thought for sure that, you know, the city of Lansing would, you know, pat his back or make sure he was okay. And you're doing this, Mayor Shore, you need to, you know, I don't know, say a few prayers because I don't think you're going to go up in heaven. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amanda Thomashow followed by Erica Lynn.
Hi, sorry, I didn't see the unmute button. So just first of all, to the speaker before me, I believe Sue, I just thank you so much for sharing your story with us. I think that was just really important. And I feel, I also think that Andy Shore should probably be saying some prayers. I'm going to go ahead and echo Michael earlier and ask you all to vote no confidence in Andy. He has no business leading our community. And I'm really embarrassed to call him the mayor of the city I live in. I also want to say I'm really disappointed in the fact that the Bets Dunbar resolution went back to committee. I think, I'm not sure. It's kind of confusing. I'm getting my cones infusion tomorrow, so my energy is really limited. But that whole thing, while confusing, it was also, it really bummed me out. It's really clear at this point that policing in the United States has super racist roots. I appreciate that protecting your community is a long-standing tradition that precedes the foundation of this country. But here in America, the history of policing is full of racism and violence. I understand many people feel safe in our current system of oppression and white supremacy, but that does not make it okay. I invite some of you to spend a little less time sitting by and listening to the police scanner and a lot more time trying to find actual solutions to the problems in this community. Sometimes the right thing isn't the easy thing. So I guess that's just what I'm asking you all to do, just the right thing. What's right for the most vulnerable of us, what's right for the communities that have been historically marginalized. We have seen the direction that upholding white supremacist systems can take us. We watched it on video as Anthony Hulan told officers he couldn't breathe and then took his last breath. So let's just do better. I'm really tired. A lot of people have said it a lot better than me, but I just, we've got to end the state-sanctioned violence, defund the police, and Andy Shore, please, please resign.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn followed by Frank Holmes.
Thank you. First off, really quickly to Edward and then also someone else. The Inglewood County Medical Examiner would absolutely beg to differ on the semantics. Anthony Hulan's death was ruled a homicide by positional asphyxiation. So I just want to point that out. It was ruled a homicide. So we can argue about the word term murder and how it offends you, but it happened. Intentions don't matter in situations like this. The road to hell is paved with great intentions. So moving on from that, I also wanted to swing back around to what we just witnessed regarding the investing in our community proposal that was put forth by councilmember Bets. Thank you to councilmember Bets and councilmember Dunbar and Jackson very much. You did your best tonight to not allow everyone to stay comfortable, as we usually do regarding the issue on this resolution. But the fact that we literally witnessed a dumpster fire on wheels rolling down a hill just to avoid us, the people, knowing where the council stands on investing in the people of this city is astounding to me. But it also tells us exactly what we need to know. November 19, 2020, L4BL. Please remember that. I want to swing back around because something came out this week that I was glad to see and it was really overdue. Councilmember Bets, again, thank you. You're getting a lot of praise tonight because you seem to be the only one that is listening to the people. You put out an open letter and you called for Propagandys resignation, which is obvious. Everyone's calling for it. I mean, literally, what section in the city isn't pissed? His response had to do with rumors. Guessing protesting protesters, that's not a rumor. Cutting retiree health benefits, not a rumor. Destroying the careers of black employees, not a rumor. Racial discrimination and retaliation lawsuits filed, not a rumor. Anthony Hulan's murder at the hands of LPD, not a rumor, okay? Them still being on the job right now as a liability, these are not rumors. And that is literally coming from someone who just refuses to be accountable. His response also talked about, I'll paraphrase, Lansing residents need leaders that are focused on solutions. I agree. That is not you. You also stated that you will continue to do your job on behalf of the city of Lansing and maybe that was a slip-up to you. Maybe you really do mean the city, the administration, you. Because that seems to be the only people that you're doing this job for. And that's not what we need. I am waiting for you to serve us, the people. So in closing, we definitely need someone that is capable of leading our city. And you have proven over and over and over, you literally do not have the capacity. So I asked the council, how committed are you to us? And when will you lose confidence in him the way that the city has? When?
Thank you. Mr. Holmes has dropped off, so the final speaker tonight is James Reddick.
Hi there. Thank you all for your time tonight, first and foremost. I'm disappointed. There seems to be, we seem to be kicking this can down the road further and further without being willing to pick it up and look at it for what it is. It seems like there's a lot of pearl clutching amongst a lot of city council members in hopes of not offending anyone. And there's a lot of talk about making sure that we have everyone's considerations in mind when we make decisions about analyzing and doing research into our police budgets. That's it. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe that's where we're at right now. We're not talking about making line item changes to budgets or anything like that. We're looking at delving into the budget and seeing what it looks like and looking into some statistics and trying to make an informed decision on that. And I think that's generally a good process to engage in and I can't understand why that would be such a controversial issue. It seems like you guys want to keep hearing from more and more people. And if having five-hour city council meetings in order to do that is the way to go, then I encourage my fellow Lansing residents to keep showing up to these and to continue reaching out to your city council members and urging action. I think we need to look at where we're spending our police budget and where we can take some funds away to provide equity to all of our citizens. That should be the goal. It is, our goal should be to create a city that is safe and fair and just for all of our citizens. And I know it's hard to conceptualize a rethinking of a way of doing things. But it's work that needs to be done and it's important work. And it's disappointing for me, like I said, to see you all continually just pushing that off in fear of offending someone for some reason. Let's dive in and do something meaningful. You all are politicians who I hope are concerned with affecting change and change is sometimes uncomfortable and that's okay. But let's take the time to do these things and make a better community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further business before the Lansing City Council. We are adjourned.